Good afternoon. City of Lamarck, City Council Workshop Meeting of August ninth, twenty twenty one. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a workshop on Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty one, beginning at six o'clock in the Council chambers at eleven oh nine B Value Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via teleconference, hosted to resume for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called order. Robin, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A present, Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Still present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
All day present. Thank you, Robin. We'll now have an invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Now, one of the things this council has decided to do was to invite ministers from our local community to come in and pray for us and lead us in prayer. Today, we have the honor of having with us Jervey Wyndham from Resonate Church. And so Pastor Wyndham, if you would approach, we're going to have the invocation from Pastor Wyndham, and I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Compey on to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Pastor Wyndham.
It's truly a blessing to be here to pray with you all. In the late eighteen hundreds, there was a great Bible teacher Oswald Chambers who said that prayer does not prepare us for greater works, that prayer is the greater work. Will you join, join us in prayer? Father God, we truly thank you for this great blessing of being able to gather together in your name. Lord, to pray for our city, to pray for its leaders, its citizens, our first responders, for our community. God, we know that you are sovereign and you are above all things. We know, God, that you are greater than anything that this city has ever faced. You are greater than anything that we're facing now, and you are greater than anything that we'll ever face in the future. God, I pray that you would just bless us to truly hear your heart as we're in the presence of one another. I pray that you would teach us by your spirit how to listen well to you and how to listen well to others. God, we truly need your peace in order to do that. So we take this time and we ask for your peace. Lord, we ask also for your power because, God, our leaders are facing challenges that they've never faced. We're living in times that we've never seen. But, God, we know that you are greater than all that we're facing right now. God, will you give our leaders the power and the courage to make the decisions that honor you and best serve the citizens of this great city? And, Lord, we ask still that you would give us your provision. God, you know the needs of each and every person in the city. Your word tells us that the very hairs on our head are numbered by you. So, God, truly, you know us better than we know ourselves. Lord, will you provide for the leaders? Will you provide for the citizens? Will you provide for our first responders? Will you provide for our community as only you can in these difficult times? And lastly, Lord, we ask for your protection. God, we not only ask for the protection from without, but Lord, we ask for the protection from within. God, would you help us to guard our hearts? Will you help us to guard our minds? Lord, would you comfort us? There are so many that are suffering from anxiety, depression, so many things in our community. God, will you comfort us? Will you protect us, not just from without, but from within? God, we ask all these things in your name because we know that we don't just pray to the God that can, we pray to the God that will. So we trust you in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To your republic, our which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you for that, Pastor Jervey. God bless you. And let it be so. Item four, our citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item. Limited to three minutes, you should give the mayor your name, an item you wish to speak about, in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute your phone if you are visiting with us via phone. If you are attending via smartphone, tablet, or computer, there is, there, there should be the lower left-hand portion of your screen, a microphone icon that you may select to mute or unmute so that you may speak. If you're attending in person, please approach the podium to my left, state your name and your address, and you will be heard. Kyle, at this time, are there any persons online wishing to speak?
Mr. Maritas, there, David Webb is with Scottville. He's, he's on there.
And what about the Aria person?
She's, yeah, she's with Seventeen.
Mr. Marita? Mr. Marita? Mr. Marita? Okay, well, are there any, there's one person attending today that, that wishes to speak, Gracie Flores. Hello, Ms. Gracie. Would you give us your address, please, ma'am?
My address is two twenty-three nineteen Meadow Lane.
Twenty-three nineteen Meadow Lane? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Well, the only, I've lived in Lamarck for nine years, and I love the city. The only complaint I have is that when you have water leaks or main breaks in the streets, they don't come and fix them. The first time I reported mine was in December of two thousand twenty. They came to fix it in February of two thousand twenty. It was full of water, the whole ditch, that whole time. They finally came and fixed it, patched it up. I mean, it made a mess of my yard, but they patched it up there, you know, thank God they fixed it. Well, and then a few months ago, now there was a water leak ball in the street, and all they do is come back and patch it up, patch it up, and it stays the same. I mean, we've got so many people on our block that, that, I mean, it's just a mess.
Yes, ma'am.
And the people drive over them. They just patched it again a few days ago. People drive through there like nothing. Their little ones just go everywhere. And it's, I just don't think it's right. I mean, if they're gonna fix it, fix it right, or don't fix it at all.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We, we can hear you. We can't answer you unless it's a factual piece of information because we're not allowed to because we don't know where this fits on our agenda, and we can only speak about things that have been published on our agenda. But we do hear you, and let me say that Mr. Carey is our city manager at this time. And certainly, if you would give him your name and your number, he would certainly follow up with you in the morning to make sure that your questions are answered, and certainly your issues are being resolved to the best of our ability as a city. So could you, would, would you, would you mind if, if he gets the information off of?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other persons wishing to speak in the audience today? Yes, sir. Welcome. If you would, when you arrive at the podium, if you would give us your name and your address, sir?
My name is Redon Della. I'm supposed to live on twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-one Nast Street.
Nastby?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Cross Street is church, McKinley Moore Church. And then the tree fell on, on, on Nast Street. And I've been telling them, telling them, but what they did was they dropped it up about four o'clock in the morning. So I called them up. So they kept on, we, then they came out. They moved the tree back on, on Stu Street, down the street right behind the church, a lot, and they lifted it. Been there four years now, still there. The roaches and the rats running out of there. Not until, and told them, when they gonna move, said they gonna get it, they gonna get, they're still there.
The tree?
Yeah, the tree that one fell off. There's a cottonwood.
Okay, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
It fell down, and I told them, I said, they gonna move, said they only gonna stay there for a couple of days, they gonna move. It's been four years.
Okay.
And I took the picture of it.
Okay, now the folks that moved that tree, were they City of Lamarck employees?
It was Lamarck.
Okay, okay. Would you do me a favor, and would you give Mr. Carey the contact information to, to your, you or your sister, whoever, so that we can locate you and we can definitely try to see if we can resolve those issues for you?
Okay.
Would you, you can leave it with him right now if you want to, yeah. Are you gonna get it, James?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other persons wishing to speak? Okay, we are moving now to item five A, item five A, old business. Discussion relating to the, to approving the revised general plan for Olympia Lakes. Mr. Dan? Good afternoon, sir.
Counsel?
This is Olympia Lakes. If you all remember, counsel, we looked at this last meeting, and we had one or two requests for, for this, for this development. Go ahead, Mr. Dan.
Mayor, that's correct. At the last council meeting, several council member has some questions about the addition of the ADA parking space, which they've addressed, and the open play in the drill site, dog park and open play area, which they've addressed as well on the plan. In addition to that, the Councilman Carlson wanted to look at relocating the access drive, the second access drive to the north from the south, and that was addressed as well. So I think they've, they've picked up the items that was requested and made the necessary revision we're recommending for.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Dan as relates to Olympia Lakes?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So the, on the non-residential space that's in the map on the key, you know, there's the point ten increase in road space. I'm assuming that has to do with the new access point, that's the street, okay. And then I couldn't remember, and it, I didn't have in my notes from the last meeting, Din, but, so the dog park and this new multi-sports facility, it, will that be open to the public, or is it just for folks that live in that neighborhood?
Open by, it's open, so it's technically open to the public. That's, as, as our understanding, what, what's proposed.
Okay.
It's not gated or anything, so there's, there's opportunity for the, the public's use, although it's still be maintained by the HOA.
Okay, so the, the main reason I asked that was because something that didn't occur to me when we looked at it last time was, you know, we, you guys wisely advised the addition of the two parking spaces for the park, but I wondered if there's gonna end up being any kind of issue with the fact that now we have this dog park and multi-sports facility, and there's no parking reserved for that big space. And so are we just talking about folks parking on the street in that neighborhood to go use that?
That would be the only option. There are fifty-foot wide streets, so there, there are some opportunities for parking front of the house, or, you know, possibly along the lane if we want to allow for.
Okay.
There is gonna be a connection point where they can get to from the lane from the street, so there may be an opportunity.
Okay, well, so for me, it boils down to, like, I still would have liked to see, you know, a decrease in one home lot to increase park size, bring that, that park, the playground facility up to closer to an actual acre or parking for this dog park area. However, I'm also very aware that they're meeting our requirements, and I mean, they're exceeding our requirements for green space, and I don't want to hold them to a higher, I don't want to nitpick and not hold everyone to the same thing. So I just want to put out there that I think it's time for us to revisit some of these things again, because I keep coming back to these kinds of issues, and they're a sticking point for me. Aria, I want to be clear, I know you're meeting it, like.
Yeah, what I would recommend is, when you start addressing development issues, incorporate that into your ordinance as,
Right.
you know, and this, this, as a city evolves, there'll be additional requirements that council would like to see, and it's just an update every so often.
Yeah.
So that you can address it, and it's clearly defined so that they're meeting it.
Exactly, and, and I'm in complete agreement with that. I just am saying, it's definitely, I feel the imperative that it's time for us to revisit that ordinance for these kinds of things that are a sticking point for me in particular. But, and also, though, the multi-sports field is great, I'm really excited about that, but what, what's the impact of that, really? Like, are we talking about, like, is that a, there's football goals, there's benches, there's risers? I just, I'm curious to know a little bit more about that, or is it just that this section will be fenced off, and we're calling it a dog park, and here's a field?
Yeah, I think generally that's what it's for, for, for kids to run out and throw a football, or
Okay.
pick the ball around with playing soccer or something, setting up their own goals.
Okay.
Unless, Aria, you have anything to contribute, Aria?
Um, yes, hello, everybody. What, the, just would like to add to the parking requirement issue with respect to the multi-sports field and dog parks. There is a cul-de-sac at that side of the, so there is some opportunity to, for, you know, somebody who's not a part of this particular development, you know, come and use these spaces, but they could also park there. And as far as the multi-sports field, like Din mentioned, it can be used for a variety of things. We have indicated some sort of a shade structure around this area. So, you know, if, if you have parents accompanying the kids, they could just sit down, there might be a bench or two somewhere so they could just, you know, rest themselves there as well. So we're trying to, you know, we're limited because this sits on a drill site, you cannot put permanent structures on a drill site. So, you know, I mean, even the goalposts that we have kind of indicated in the, in, on a site plan, they're actually movable. You can actually take them and, you know, take them away if, if that is required to be done. So we, we're trying to accommodate as much as we possibly can. And again, because this is surrounded by homes, you can't do a very, very active sports field like a baseball or whatever, that would also involve some sort of permanent construction, so.
So I appreciate all that. The last thing I'll say again, something that would make me feel better about, I think this plan looks really good, but a detail that I would like to see is like the true estimated number of benches, trash cans, or like, those, those kinds of things that are incorporated in the green spaces so that, you know, like you just said, you know, I want to have an idea, does this, this dog park, I don't want people envisioning that there's gonna be this huge shade structure and all these things that we can't physically, that we cannot put there because it's a drill site, but can we anticipate there's going to be fifteen benches along the walk, the walking trail, or something like that, and surely there's some kind of estimation we could get there.
At this point, I can't give you a number.
Sure, that's fine.
Eventually, yeah.
Okay, well, that's just something I'd like to see, please, if you can.
Yes, yes.
And that's all I have.
Din, Aria, thank you very much for moving that, that entrance. That, to me, that, that means a lot, so, and I'm sure, I'm sure if an emergency happens, the first responders will appreciate that, too. So thank you, that's all I gotta say.
No, thank you for bringing that out, because once you mentioned that, we kind of also realized that, you know, it's a once, something that might happen just once, and you've got to be prepared for that, so we understand that.
Couple, thank you for the changes. Once again, I, I don't want our developers to feel that we're being, you're being picked on. You certainly made the effort, Aria, and to make these changes, I appreciate that. I also would suggest that you take the opportunity while you're still at this phase to reach out to our chairperson of our parks aboard and get them engaged to this discussion that, that councilperson Casey Callip was mentioning on benches and things of that nature. I think that's an opportunity for us to work together. It's not just on you on your side, on that side. And, and I have a little note for you, totally different topic, but take that when you, when you finish, yeah. Thanks, that's all I, so, yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything for you on this one, Din. Thank you all for doing your due diligence and working with the council to produce a better product. Item five B, old business, discussion relating to the status of the file ordinance. So I believe I put this on the agenda with Gus, my friend Gus. Gus, what do we want to say about this?
Well, this is kind of up to council. I know Kathleen had distributed just some thoughts that she had, I believe, in speaking with a local residents. So it's kind of on, there are some proposals in here, different things that other cities are doing. And then, once we have feedback from the council with what they, with what you all want, we will put together an ordinance. That ordinance will then be subject to two readings, a lot of public comment, so public hearing. So at this stage, we're just looking for some direction from council with what you all would like to see in this ordinance.
Okay, so council, let's, 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 let's go quickly, if we can, into some must haves in, in this ordinance so that we can give clearer direction. While you all are thinking about this, one of the things that we talked about was secure coops. We talked about potential, the potential to have runs, chicken runs, I guess, would you call them? Where the file would have a set area to roam, if you will. We talked about routine cleanings of those coops on a regular basis, sanitation of those coops on a regular basis. We talked about the possibility of having some sort of registration so that potentially our, our co-compliance officers would know where these, these coops are so that they can, they can regulate them and make sure that they are compliant with the ordinance. Those are just some of the things that we talked about. There is distance, whether or not we want to consider distance. Some even suggested whether or not we wanted to consider permission from neighbors. There's all sorts of things that we've talked about. So let's try to bring more clarity to our legal team so that they can begin crafting this ordinance for us. So that we can at least look at it and then start to work with it. What are the must haves?
Well, for me, no, no roosters. I mean, and those that have roosters, give them a grandfather date. Give them till December thirty-first. I, I know roosters are, I hear a lot of complaints about roosters, so but I know you can't have chickens without roosters, but I just don't think roosters belong, I mean, it, it, obviously, obviously, a lot of neighbors find them offensive, so I mean, you can have the chickens, you can lay the eggs, roosters, not so much. That's, to me, that's.
Yeah, no, no roosters, and if you have roosters, which you shouldn't have roosters, because that's already part of the existing ordinance.
Right, but if you do.
But if you do, we're going to give you a grandpa, what are we doing?
December thirty first.
We're going to give you time to get rid of your roosters.
Yeah, and then January first, you have no roosters.
Okay.
But I also think it needs to be, because the problem with the last ordinance is that it wasn't spelled out. I think it needs to be said that, that, that we are not to have roosters.
I think, yeah, I
It needs to actually say that.
I agree. I think my, the things for me that I think are the most important to clear up in changing the ordinance is making it well, first off, it's a balance between, we don't need to get into the weeds about every possible issue with this. And I think the, we don't need a lengthy ordinance, but we need a more specific ordinance. So we need to get rid of the the language that's confusing that says animals and foul. I need to specifically address foul. Or if we want to get more nitty gritty, chickens.
Yeah.
And I think we can say roosters are excluded. I think we should put a cap on the number of chickens. I think I suggested eight or something last time. There was people more comfortable with six or four or whatever, whatever that may be. And then from my, from my point of view, most important after that is clearing up for code compliance. What is the distance from, whether it's property line or whatever, that is reasonable and makes it clear that the person's home is not included in that. So when we say it's has to be fifty feet from, minimum fifty feet from a residence excluding the owners of the chickens, if they want to have a coop right against their house.
Any structures on their property?
Yes, excluding, yes. So that there's not the question of, we'll have a gazebo ten feet away from it or a shed, which is, I know, has been part of the issue and has been made it very confusing for them. It needs to be about adjacent neighboring properties. I get, you know, I don't have any, I think there was lots of suggestions made, fifty feet, ten feet, whatever.
The standard for most cities is fifty two.
And then I'm, I'm perfectly in favor of a very low barrier to entry registration. So that there's some element of keeping accountability.
Okay. So I heard you say, limiting the number of chickens. Some people said eight, some people said six, some people said four. So let's start there. Where are we? Eight, six, four, or any limit at all? Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I think I mentioned that discussion. I really think it's a product of the size. On the west side, we have
That's true.
very large areas. I mean, my home, for example, is on a large area and other areas. So I think there has to be, I would urge us that we, in this planning phase, some of our residents have their thoughts and their ideas already written down. So please get those to to the city manager and the attorney can relay them to the city attorney at the drafting. So now is the time to to submit your thoughts as well, too. It's not just us up here. Now is the time for
Well, and some of them have already, so it's compiling what they thought. But I agree with that. I think a limit on chickens that's attached to square footage that's based on reasonable, like in home setting practices.
So so a regular lot size would be what? I mean, not, not the lot size, but the amount of chickens. You just regular lot, normal in the city lot? What do we, is there a number?
Most lots are like sixty-five hundred square feet.
So allow in a regular lot, because Joe is, is offering the distinction between a regular lot size and some of the lot sizes that we have.
Well, it's not about the lot size, it's about the enclosure for which the chickens can be in, because we don't want them to roam at large. And so it has, it's about, you know, if someone builds a coop and a run that's the size of this room, they could reasonably have more chickens than one where it's the size of, you know.
So you're, you're tying the amount of chickens to the size of the coop?
Mm-hmm. To the, to the space where the chickens are kept.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which, so then your lot size doesn't matter.
I, that's what I, that's what I'm proposing, is that the lot size doesn't matter, as long as they meet those requirements, but also are not within fifty feet or whatever we decide is the appropriate distance from your adjacent neighbor.
Fifty feet from the front corner of the coop to the corner of the next residence?
Oh.
I mean, that's pretty specific for
Kathleen, can you come up here, please? You shared your thoughts about this last time.
I mean, she said she wanted clarity, so.
I think, I think we have to get as clean without getting pedantic as we can about it. Based, what was one of the things you suggested as a way that, a measurement that would make it easier on the officers when they're out in the field? When it comes to, is this coop, is this chicken run far enough away from a neighbor?
Oh, the, the, as the Shanti said, most of the cities use twenty-five feet or fifty feet, but it's from the coop. But the coop is also set at a certain place in the lot. It can't be within ten feet of the property line or and or ten or twenty feet of each side. And then, of course, that's added to the twenty-five feet to the other dwelling. So I think that's what you were looking for instead of the gazebo and all that is, is the distance to another dwelling. So but the coop size will make a difference. But if we want a coop, if we say it's this big, do they have, can they place it anywhere on their lot? Because if they decide to put it in the back corner of their lot, they may be within twenty-five feet or maybe in fifty feet. So that's, a lot of cities do regulate where you can put it and the size of it and the square feet per chicken.
Which I think we need to do. I think we need to have a standard for square footage per chicken. And I think we need to do you feel the need that we have to regulate where it gets placed on the lot? If, I mean, I
Considering the different size of our lots and in some parts of the city where the lots are fifty by a hundred and some lots are seventy by a hundred and twenty, I would say that we should.
Okay.
And even, because if we put it in the back of the fence, right next to their fence, and it's within twenty-five, not, still not with twenty-five feet of the resident, it's still in their backyard, it's right next to their backyard, which may disturb them.
I see what you're saying.
So I could say if we do, kind of like the setbacks on any, on any lot we're going to build on.
To be within ten
Maybe follow those setbacks, yeah.
Okay, so like
But I would exclude the owner's dwelling from that.
Okay, I agree with that. So there, we're going to regulate the square footage per chicken. We're regulating where it can be on your lot with, with a rubric somewhere around ten feet within your own property.
Setback.
Setback, thank you, excluding your dwelling. And in addition, it needs to be twenty-five feet from, how would you say that, the nearest dwelling? In addition to your setback?
So what is the, what, what, what does the ordinance say about coops?
It doesn't, it doesn't specify. It's very vague.
So we are, so the ordinance will now say that you have to have a coop. And you have to have runs.
You should have a run.
You should have a run. The ordinance should say you should have a run. And that would reduce the opportunities for chickens to roam the entire yard, which then they would drop, scratch, I guess, you call it, do you call it scratch? Is that what you call it? Chicken feed, whatever it is, right? So, which would then possibly alleviate some of the problems that we're having with pests and things of that nature in other people's yards. That's the theory.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it would, it would alleviate a lot of times where chickens running in their yard is disturbs the dogs next door or kids out playing or anything.
Okay.
And, and some of the thoughts like Kathleen has said, is that it will be in the backyard, not visible from the street.
How, how many square feet? How many chickens per square feet? If you got a coop this, I don't know, how big are the coops?
I mean, whatever size, depends on how many chickens that you would regulate they have.
I think, okay, so. Sorry, go ahead.
If this is also for, for the residential, this is for the residential zoning district.
Yes.
So if we have fifty chickens on a lot, that's probably not going to be a residential use. And we will have other issues.
Sure.
The ongoing of commercial activity.
Sure. So yeah, we do bump up into getting into like urban farms and whatnot. And we don't have any language around that yet. So maybe we should have a cap of up to twenty chickens, up to fifteen chickens, twelve chickens. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm saying there should be, I, I, that's reasonable. That even if you had a large space, if you had a large enough lot to accommodate it and it wasn't bothering anybody, but then you do go from having backyard chickens to a different kind of operation. I think that's reasonable. Do we have to, like, again, I want to stop us from, I want us to like have something, but not run away.
Do we have to do work, guys?
Do, I don't want us to start talking about urban farms today. Let's put it that way. I do think, I do think it's reasonable to put a cap on the number of chickens in a residential lot. Giving people some leeway if they have a larger lot size and they know that they wouldn't be, like, they could fit all these requirements we're talking about. Okay, maybe they can have more than six, but you can't have however many.
Would it, Gus, would it be possible, you know, our dog ordinance or the kennel ordinance, you can't have any more than four? That's putting a cap on the number of dogs and including cats and puppies and everything. Is that something we could do?
Absolutely.
For this?
Absolutely, yeah. We can have a cap.
And then manage the square footage in a coop based on what that cap is?
What's the cap, guys?
Three to five feet, three to five square feet per, per foot.
Of coop space.
Yeah.
So what's the cap on, on the, the amount of chickens?
So if we could say ten chickens, that's what, fifty square feet?
Are we, are we suggesting that we
That's a very, I think we could
It's a big coop considering it's fifty
I don't know if chick, if ten chickens are
I will say, my experience, I mean, I, I am not a chicken farmer, but I have raised chickens many times. I think three feet is totally reasonable. It's the lower end of that, like, ideal. But I think for what we're talking about, especially since we're still talking about really small flocks.
If you have a run, you could reduce that square footage. Because the chickens can get out and get into the run and gives them more room.
We have quality of life for the chickens.
So did you say that you, you raised chickens, Casey?
Uh huh.
How many did you raise?
About three hundred.
Okay, that's, that's a bad
And they definitely did not have five square feet.
That's a bad conversation for us to have.
On my farm. I want to be clear, they were not in my yard. It was on my farm. And it was a bit, they had acres to roam. And they lived in a very small coop at night. That's all they went, you know, when they're roosting, they need very little space. But the difference that we're getting into here is, is farm versus a backyard. And for some folks, they're going to have mainly just coop space. So we do want to consider, like, we don't want anyone raising chickens in a box. And that's the chicken's entire life, because then we are talking about pest problems. We are talking about quality of life problems. I don't think that's the majority, from what we've heard. That's not what's happening with most folks raising chickens here. They're doing it because they love them. So I think we can balance, like, I think maybe three, maybe we can ask to, we can look at a couple of other ordinances from other cities and see what their minimum square footage for coop slash run space is and go with that.
So we want to, we're going to definitely have coop, a coop, that's going to be part of ordinance.
Yes, they should have
It's definitely going to be the, the space requirements will be X amount of feet per chicken. We're definitely going to have run space requirements, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think so. That's depend, again, dependent on the number of chickens.
And we're going to have a cap. And so we're not capping it at three hundred chickens, nor are you suggesting that today?
Yes, I will say that again. I am not suggesting that anybody raise three hundred chickens. I would not do that to co-compliance.
You are the, I don't know if this is true or not, but, but I would suspect that you are the, and I don't know about Joe, he might surprise us. But you're the only person on this council that has actually raised chickens. So, well, Joe, Joe, well, not you and Joe. So how many chickens do we have, guys?
So, you know.
Are we, are we capping it at ten? I'm just throwing a number out there. I have no idea how this works.
I think ten, I think ten is a perfectly healthy number to start with.
Ten's a good number? Anybody got heartburn with ten? Okay, okay.
And no roosters.
And no roosters.
No roosters. And light
No other fowl either.
Light, light registration, any, any person that owns chickens in our community has to fill out a registration, light, not a permit, just, we just need to know where you are.
And is that going to involve inspections for sanitation?
That's a conversation for this side of my, we do need, they, they do need to be sanitized regularly. Clean monthly, sanitized every six months. I don't know how we want to regulate that.
That's the kind of thing that, that's what I'm afraid of is running away with us, because that is the diligence we'd have to have in order to prove that and follow up with that. You know, I think, I think what we need is to set a standard of that's the kind of thing that I think if we leave to co-compliance's discretion, if we say coops have to be sanitary, clean, and, you know, they meet all these other requirements that are the other, the main nuisance requirements, the distances and whatnot, then there has to be some, and you tell me, Kathleen, I just feel like it sounds like it would be a lot to all of a sudden say that now they're going out and doing monthly inspections, every six month inspections, especially if we're not attaching a fee to it. And I don't want us to attach a fee to it yet.
Now, there have, there are some cities that do require a permit and registration, and they do send someone out for an initial yearly inspection of the coop and the yard and the run. But it's a yearly. A monthly inspection would be pretty taxing.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, I don't foresee us doing a monthly inspection. What I, what, what, the, the point that we need to, we need to get to, and however that looks, Casey, I'm, I'm with you on that, is that they, these coops and these runs need to be clean. And ultimately, underneath that is the idea that we have to consider our neighbors in all of this.
Right.
And we have to consider that our neighbors may not be as inclined to chickens as we are, which means that we have to reduce, right, the amount of experiences that they would have as a result to us owning and caring for chickens. Which means, one of the things, one of the biggest things that I've heard in this whole ordeal, people aren't necessarily upset about the chickens as much as they're upset about the things that are brought with the chickens, right? Whether it be roosters crowing, whether it be chickens running all over the yard, agitating dogs, or whether it be them facilitating this unsanitary, not that chickens are unsanitary, but unsanitary scenario where rodents and snakes and all other sorts of pests are now, you know, in people's properties and yards and things of that nature. So whatever we can do to keep those places clean and contained, whether that's a, every six months and every month cleaning, whether that's a yearly inspection that would say your coop will be clean, your coop will not have any noxious odors, or whatever that looks like, Casey, I'm willing to go with you.
Yeah.
It just has to be strict and strictly enforced.
Yeah, I, I think if we have some language that is a little, has a little more specificity, again, without pairing it with a monthly inspection or something, I think maybe a yearly inspection, if you think that's doable, I'm totally in favor of that. I think, you know, some of the things I saw from, from when I was doing research when we first started this, it's like, you know, again, like the city of Austin, pages and pages and pages of legislation around this kind of issue. But some of the things I think we could pull are verbiage around like, you know, a person may not keep fowl in an enclosure unless the enclosure is maintained in a sanitary condition that does not allow flies to breed or cause an odor offensive to an adjacent residence or business. And then specifically later on, it says that the animal's owner shall regularly maintain the animal and its shelter to prevent odor or health or a sanitation problem. I think if we point more specifically at that, that gives them more authority to say like, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't list X, Y, and Z things that have to happen, like you have to have a metal container or you have to do this, but it gives them the ability to say, this is not sanitary, it's breeding flies. There's, I see rats running around.
We, we have ordinances too that pertain to that, just like dog droppings and everything. We have ordinance that speaks, speak clearly to that. So and we would base our inspections, which we do now, on sanitary conditions.
Right.
And, and I've been to some chicken coops where it's just spotless, right? They're cleaned in a lot of people's houses. I was amazed. But then there are some where they do let them just run in the coop and they don't clean them every day or every couple of days.
All right. So, so, so if someone has a rooster, it crows, but then you come and you can't find it.
Right.
What happens?
We can't, if we can't find it, we can't find it. We can't, we can't, if we can't find it, we can't find it. But there's a lot of times complaints will come in that somebody has a rooster and it turns out they don't. But somebody across the street may have had one. Or somebody down behind them.
I also do want to point out that hens crow too.
Right. And there's no schedule on crowing. They can crow in the morning, they can crow at night. And it is disturbing.
You can get a hen. We had many hens that.
So, so let me just, I'm just asking a question. So if a person has a rooster, you find the rooster, you find that they have a rooster, then what's the next step? Or that, is that person then fined according to the?
No, the fine, we, we find, right citation is the last resort. When, when we find one, we talk to them, we let them know what the ordinance says. And normally they're in violation of the ordinance of the hundred foot law or the unsanitary conditions or something. And we asked them, said, your complaint, the complaint is based on your rooster making noise and disturbing your neighbors. So you will need to get rid of this rooster.
So if it's a repeat offender by that, I mean, when does the fine take place? If you, is the second time or third?
After this, after the second violation letter.
Okay, so does, does an ordinance speak to that? Does it say that after the second violation, you will, you will need to have that in?
So that would be part of the.
Would that help to have that? Get out to the, because sometimes, because, because then you get out of the argument of selective enforcement. So then you know, hey, you've had two times. I warned you two times. This is the third time. Now you're being fined. So we need to put teeth in it like that. And then that's what we need to do. And then that relieves the community of people saying that code is selective enforcement. You know, you can go ahead and put some teeth in it.
That would be Gus's part.
I can do that.
And I know the municipal judge would have set a fine for that, sure.
Um, what if we say like annual inspection and random inspection? That way it leaves code enforcement. If they get a complaint, they can go and investigate it. Or they could do it six months down the road.
And that's what I wanted to drill down into. So if we have neighbors, we need to add something to this ordinance that if neighbors are complaining. It gives you the authority to go in and investigate. That if, if you're going to have chickens in our community and there's a complaint. Then that gives code enforcement a right to go onto your property to investigate that complaint. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, folks need to complain every day. That's not, you know, we have to find a way. To give our community members a chance to object. Without allowing that to turn into something that will overtax and overload your staff.
And these have clear wording in it. As the existing ordinance now that's on hold, I guess. It is complaint driven, but it's not really clear that it's complaint driven for the citizens to understand. But it's, it's not where we go out and we seek out chickens. We, it's complaint, we get a complaint even if we have the new ordinance. And somebody calls and complains that they can smell them. We're going to investigate that period for the health and safety issues.
Yeah, but you can't go, my, my understanding, standing is if people have privacy offenses. You can't go beyond that privacy fence. We need something on the books that says. If it's legal, maybe it's not legal. Gus will tell me if it, if it did. That says, because you own chickens. If your neighbor complains, it gives us a right to go into your property to check the nature of that complaint. Is that legal?
We, we can work with that.
We can work with that. Okay.
Can we make that even more specific so that it's. About your adjacent neighbors or your, your close neighbors? Cause we did hear a lot about there being complaints made from people who don't even live.
Maybe that would be part of the permitting, registration part, maybe putting that wording in there.
Yeah.
That you, I think agreeing to this registration's permit, you. Agree that you'll have annual inspections or.
And allow access. And I'm, and I'm with you Casey, I get it, I get it. I think the, the most important, every citizen's complaint is important.
Yes.
So let me say it this way, the most relevant, not important, the most relevant complaint is the one from your neighbor, right? Because that's the person or people that are being affected on a daily basis. So I, I get you. I get you on that case. So can we add that, Gus? Any, any other, oh, here's the thing Casey, and I'm, I'm just kind of picking your brain because I'm.
Cause all of a sudden I'm like.
Cause you had 300 chickens. That's just a tremendous feat in itself. Do you have heartburn on the metal feeding and watering dishes? I like the fact that if we have a potential for them to be metal and, and, and then they could contain.
No, I think, um, I, I don't have heartburn about it. I think that again, it just opens a whole can of worms in terms of. Okay, well first there should be a difference between like watering dishes and the feeders that are used to feed multiple chickens. You can find those metal, but the standard for those that you buy at the feed store are plastic, like they just aren't. And that's what the average person is going to buy. The containers to hold feed, that's the problem. Because that's what we're talking about, big bags of feed. And so that, if we wanted to have language around. You know, I don't know if it necessarily is the same metal, but if it said like an impermeable, something that allowed you to say, nope, this is not adequate. This is a, you just have a bag of feed laying out, or you have a bag of feed in a box that clearly has no lid or whatever. Some language around that, that I think is totally doable. I wouldn't want to extend it to what type of dish they have their water in or what type of feeder they use. But the storage of feed should.
Okay. I've never read in any other city's ordinance, anything about the feeders. It's the storage. They bring up the storage, what, what you can store.
And I mean, and that, and that is legit because raccoons, everything will want to go for that. So we, we should tie. Requirements to how that is stored safely and securely.
Okay, that's fair. I just, again.
Yeah.
I, I want to keep the, the rodents away. So whatever that looks like, Gus, it's a non-permeable, what did you say Casey?
I mean, Kathleen is the one I think would have better language.
Kathleen, give us, give us some language.
Secure.
Non-permeable or metal.
703 Kathleen, give us some language.
He does the language. I give you that piece.
Lockable.
Lockable, non-permeable.
And I mean, I would, I would say not, maybe not plastic. Because I mean, a lot of people might use one of those toe bins and raccoons will chew right through that. So will rats.
And rats, yeah.
So if we want to say metal.
And not say lockable as in, because some people might secure it in some ways that they can't get into. So we don't want to tie somebody in to have to go buy a lock box or something.
Uh, yeah.
Something that has to secure it, keep other vermin out.
But, and, and again, if we can do that, if we can make that happen, that's a big thing. The big thing, the big thing is the, the other animals that come.
Right.
For the feed. If we can get that problem resolved, that'll go a long way.
Luckily, that's the kind of stuff that we definitely can just steal from other ordinances. There's lots of language around that.
Let me ask you this, Gus, Kathleen. We do now still have an existing ordinance on the books right now. So we would have a first reading. First of all, we'll, we'll reconvene this at the earliest in September. That's one month away. That'll be a first reading if everything goes well. Second reading in, in October, if everything goes well. Thirty days before the ordinance is able to become official. So now we're in the November. So what do we do with the existing cases, Gus? Chase, I don't want to put you on the spot. What do we do with the existing complaints against the file ordinance? How do we resolve those now?
We would, you know, just, they would have to work their way through the municipal court system with the first letter. And if that doesn't resolve, it's the second letter and then the fine. And, you know. See how we have to handle that.
Do you need help from Chase today, Kathleen? With direction on how you are to interpret that or apply that ordinance? Does he need to visit with you before he leaves?
I would, I assume so. Because it, we had the ordinance, which we all know that's vague. And then we have the directive that was there, which I'm not sure is in effect through anymore.
Okay.
And we can, I can meet with municipal court prosecutor and we can come up with a plan to.
Yeah, we have to find a way to, like, because we know that there are cases right now that you're on pause. That if we come up with something, even three quarters of what we're talking about here, they, they won't, they won't stand out. Right? But we know there would be some, and so we just have to find a way to.
Yeah.
Navigate it.
In my district, we definitely have some that needs to be resolved. And, and because they were resolved once with a previous city manager. And then they did the.
They reverted back. Yeah.
So I need those gone. So that's what I'm saying. We've got to have some, Gus, we need some interpretation now to, to relieve.
Yeah.
Kathleen, you know, she's got to be, she has to have direction on how to proceed. That's all I'm, we're asking for.
Yeah.
Sure. And I can meet with Kathleen after the meeting.
Could you, could you and Chase, Chase, could you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That way we'll get that straight because we got two things here, ladies and gentlemen. We got a new ordinance. Potentially in November, but we also have 90 days worth of existing ordinances and complaints and challenges to that ordinance. That need to be resolved at the same time. So you have your work cut out for you Kathleen and Gus and Chase. Do we have any other goodies that we like to put in this ordinance? Sure? Is that it? Let's say this before we move on to the next idea. We live in a country. Uh, that says that we all are entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Owning chickens for some is the pursuit of that happiness. We get it, we understand it. And so we cannot outlaw that in this community. We cannot outlaw something, uh, that is legal in other places. Especially when it relates to people pursuing happiness. What we can do is, is we can make sure that people's pursuit of happiness is respectful. Of other people's pursuit of happiness, right? Which means I don't necessarily want chickens. And so maybe my neighbor does. And so my neighbor would then have to keep their chickens in a way that is reasonable. To me as their neighbor, right? And so we're going to have to share in that sacrifice and we're going to have to compromise. Nobody in this will get everything that they want. But the hope is that everybody will get much of what would make them feel heard and make them feel respected. That's the goal. But nobody's going to get everything they want in this one. So I'm sorry to say that, but hopefully we can come up with a plan that'll make everybody at least satisfied. Good deal. You, you, you solved it Kathleen. You can go. I can't tell you to go home. I bet you want me to tell you to go home too. All right guys, 6A. If, if there's nothing else, 6A. Looks like this agenda may go pretty fast. That's exciting to us. That have been here since 10. 6A, award of bids. Discussion relating to award of bid LM number 01-22 to DXI Industries for liquid chlorine, calcium. Hypochlorite and sulfur dioxide in the amount of $60,000. Does anybody have any question about those very, very toxic and dangerous sounding chemicals? Nobody wants to know about that. I am 6B.
What do you use it for?
Stuff that. It's super secret Joe, you can't know. 66B. Discussion relating to award of LM bid number 04-22 to Vulcan Construction Materials for limestone base in the amount of $30,000. I believe limestone base is for our street repair chase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions about that? Item 6C, discussion relating to award of LM bid number 05-22 to Evoqua. Water technologies for odor and corro, and corrosion control in the amount of $80,000. I believe that is an additive to our water after it's been treated.
Our wastewater treatment plant, the lift stations are under control.
Auto control. So for the lift stations?
I have, I have one question and it's really about all three of them. Not questioning the need to buy these, but um.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed for all of them, we only got one qualified bid for each of those, right? Can you shed a little light on why that's happening?
Well, the prices of these materials and these, and these chemicals are, are going up, increasing. Many of these companies, I mean, it's difficult for everyone right now.
Okay.
You know, with the prices going up and I don't know, did we have, we had to run this a couple of times, I believe.
Well, three other items didn't get any bids at all. We put them all out there at the same time and.
And these are yearly bids, these are LM bids. We put these out every single year. And this year, it, it has been more difficult to get.
Okay, so it's really, it's like, it's just stress on the industry. Like people not even having the capital to bid on these things. Cause they don't have the capital to buy the items.
It's my understanding.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Items seven, new business, 7A. Discussion relating to adopting resolution number R, the letter R, dash 2021, dash 0020. Designating authorized signatories for contractual documents. And documents for requesting funds pertaining to the community development block grant disaster recovery program. Contract number 20, dash 065, dash 0105, dash letter C, 287. Ms. Suzie, do you, would you like to come and give us a brief explanation?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this is on the grant that we've already been awarded. Uh, a few months ago, I believe, when previous city manager was due here. This is just to change the signatures to mayor and interim city manager.
Right.
So this is, uh, maybe Mr. Carey can, uh, can share with us more to grant it's about. I believe it's a mitigation grant. I'm not sure I know too much about it because I just learned about all of this recently. I think it's a 1.5 million dollar.
Is that Marion Melody, the Marion Melody project? Mister, Mister Dan says it's the Marion Melody project. And all we're doing is changing the people that can sign the documents. We have.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a new city manager and after the election, it was never changed over for myself.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions guys? All right, item 7B, discussion relating to approving the use of. Mac McGaffey Highland Bayou Park for the first annual Michael Williams back to school supply drive to be held August 21st. As forwarded by the parks board with a favorable recommendation. Any questions about that?
Um, I'm obvious, I'm obviously in favor of this. Um, I kind of, I wish it had come before us earlier. It seems like this is a really tight turnaround for them to promote it. But my one question was the Culture Corporation, who's the organization affiliated with it? I've just, school supply drive is great, but I wanted to know, like, do we know where the school supplies are going? Are they connecting it to TCISD, HCRISD? Do we have any kind of information there at all?
I don't, I can, I can get that information for you unless Venisha, do you know anything about that Venisha? I know you've worked with Amanda on it. Yes, ma'am.
Of course, so you can be recorded. So we can go back 15 years from now and hear what you said.
Venisha. Okay, so, um. I just know that, um, Mr. Williams, um, his dad was a big. Involved in community, helped out, you know, kids, um, when he was alive. Mr. Williams' dad, Michael Williams, he passed last year, stage four lung cancer. He was a police officer for UTMB. Um, and his birthday is actually on this day, August 21st.
Right.
So he wanted to do a back to school drive. He does have a nonprofit organization. And, um, he says it's open to Galveston County. He's actually buying the supplies himself. And there, he's just distributed.
Oh, so it's not a drive, it's a distribution?
Right.
Oh, it's just a public distribution day. Got it. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. Well, I'm in favor of it. I think it's great. I'm, I'm delighted for it to be in the park. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty, thank you Venisha. Item 7C, discussion relating to authorizing the city of Lamarck to issue requests. Discussion relating to authorizing the City of Lamarck to issue requests for proposals for administrative services or requests for qualifications for professional services for the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. Ms. Suzie? So you want one or the other from us? And, and we need to understand the difference between a request for a proposal and a request for qualifications.
The request for, again, this is, this was brought to council once upon a time, uh, I think several meetings ago. So this, the request for proposal uh, is for the engineering services that we can utilize the American Rescue money for whatever project. And then the request for qualification is to go out bid for grant administrator. Somebody to administer the money for us and the reporting and compliance, those kind of things. So that way we, we can go out bid for those.
And this is us giving the authorization to staff to issue those as needed when it hap, when it.
That's correct, because this is one of the requirements to utilize the American Rescue money.
And when we get those, those qualifications back, then we will vote to decide on which company.
That's correct, we will bring back to council to award whoever the winner will be or recommend to council, and council would, would vote on that. Yes, sir, I mean, yeah, yes.
Right.
Suzie, I thought that Grant Works was already doing this for it.
Uh, not on the American Rescue Plan money, this is the American Rescue Plan Act.
Specifically, but I, I just, I misheard him say that, I guess that, that they were doing this just as an additional service to us. Managing managing, doing grant compliance on city grants.
On other grants.
On other grants.
Not, not the American Rescue money.
And, and as I understand it, even if they were doing it for this, we would still need to pass this because for every new parcel of funding, we have to give the permissions for staff.
And they and all the other grant administrators are welcome to participate, bid on it, and we'll evaluate based on qualifications and, and then recommend to council, and council can award it to whoever. Okay, it may become, they may be somebody else, we don't know that.
So what does the request for qualifications look like, is it standard?
Yes.
Okay, so if we, if we decide to give you permission to give requests for qualifications, which sounds like would be the administer of the grant. Do you have like a boilerplate? Uh, uh, criteria that you will then automatically? Okay, is it standard industry wide, or is it something specific to Lamarck?
If there is one that's industry standard, or we can even tweak a few areas to, to meet the needs of City of Lamarck.
Okay, but the one that you have right now ready to go is industry standard?
That's correct.
Okay, just checking.
I may do some more research and go to my own network, the JPOA group, and see if there are better ones, and, and just kind of uh, check it out, you know, just, just for the sake of it to see if we can find the best one that meets, closes to our needs.
So what's, what's a grant, I still having difficulty as I read this. This administrator is going to do what, what are the administrative services, I don't.
A grant administrator?
Yeah, what are they, they're going to provide what, compliance?
Yes.
But the, the project, the projects that shall be funded is something that will be brought to this council. So we will, once we have confirmation of the three million dollars, three point.
Four point two.
It's four point two, but we got.
It's three point seven six.
Yes, the latest number I have is four point two million.
Four point two million, yeah.
So is this should be amended to say four point two as opposed to three point seven?
Yes. Now, that four point two can change too, that, that's just the latest uh, number, that's why we put estimate. Because things can always change. Right, I don't know if I'll ever know the exact until we get the cash into our hands.
So this is, it says the first, the first portion. First half of the funding, what should be received forty five to sixty days. The major is expected to follow a year later.
And, and honestly, whatever dollar amount that the federal government wants to give to us will take. You know, yeah.
But again, this is not about, this is not about any amount of money. This is just giving the ability for you to issue requests for proposals and our appeals.
That's correct, that is correct.
I don't have any questions on that.
Yeah. The, the only thing I would say, Suzie, is um, because we are going to give you direction and permission tonight. Whatever you have, that boilerplate is what I would go with. I wouldn't, at that point, I wouldn't start trying to find other stuff. Because it almost changes the nature of the permission we're giving you, right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Industry standard.
Because we said boilerplate, you said yes, if we approve that, then that's we approved, and that keeps everybody on the same page.
Regardless, yes, uh, and, and that's fine, we'll just apply the, we have to apply the same criteria when we evaluate all bidders when we go out.
Right.
And that has always been the requirement for any bid that's come out of the city, not just this one.
Right. Any other questions about this? Thank you, Suzie.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's see, we are at item seven D, discussion relating to approving the annual purchase of surface water from Gulf Coast Water Authority in the amount of one million five hundred and fifty seven thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy two cents, which includes bond A uh, at eight thousand five hundred thirty dollars and nine cent. Bond B at thirty seven thousand three hundred and forty five thousand fifty two cent. Bond D at two hundred and forty five thousand one hundred and twenty three dollars and seventeen cent. And surface water at one million two hundred and sixty six thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety four cent for a combined total of one million five hundred and fifty seven thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy two cent. Does anybody have any questions about that? Item seven E. Discussion relating to approving the annual water pollution control and abatement contract with Galveston County Health District for services provided, including citywide grease trap inspections, wastewater and treatment inspections, and compliant investigations in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and forty two dollars. Does anybody have any questions about that? Seven F, discussion relating to setting a date for a Safe City Initiative workshop to provide direction to staff for requirements to be used in a request for proposal. We've been having this Safe City discussion for far too long, but we'll say at least for about seven, eight months. And now we're at a place where we're ready to get some help. In order to get help, staff needs to know what we would want in the request for proposal. Now, we don't even know what we would want. So this is to set a day for a workshop so that we can get UTMB, uh, any of the school districts. We can get local security companies, there's one uh, that I know that is willing to, to come and visit with us. And even uh, potential, former potential police chiefs.
And our LM.
Or former police chiefs potentially. Uh, and our own police department to come into this space with us to figure out exactly what we want to see uh, in a proposal so that we can get the best proposal possible, so that we can get the best results possible. Because this Safe City Initiative, uh, the, the report, I would think will direct us, uh, within the foreseeable future on the steps we need to take to make sure that we are implementing things to make our city as safe as possible. Being laypeople, we don't know what that looks like, so we're gonna need to have at that workshop, a bunch of different folks with different voices to help us to understand what we would look for in a request for proposal. Does that make sense? Okay.
I don't know if I understand, like, so it's a, it's essentially, it's a, it's a convening. It's a convening of coming together with these people that we, with these entities that we think are integral to this vision that we haven't fully specified yet.
Right.
Right, because I, what I, I don't, again, like this, this whole time, you know, we've had different bullet points, different things that we knew what we want, but it always keeps coming back to the creation of a plan with real objectives, right? And if we don't have that, we, we can't do anything.
Right.
But we're still not there yet, and so this is just that next step of having the conversation with these major players and inviting people to the table and saying, this is what we think. This is like the nebulous idea of what we want, can you join with us? We've already had some buy-in from UTMB saying they would totally be willing to talk to us more about it. We know we needed the ISDs, we want our PD at the table at this conversation. Family fire, we want the fire department, we all, all our first responders. Um, the part I'm missing is the request for proposal part, I don't understand what you mean.
Because, because this discussion that we're having, that we would have, will help us to understand what we need to do as relates to a plan. It'll help us to understand what sorts of things do we want in our plan. So that when we go out for a request for proposals, the people that respond to those requests will be able to say, hey Lamarck, we know that you all have ten things that you really want to see in your plan. Here's our bid to walk you through and work with you to develop this plan.
So there's, I have two thoughts on that, so number one, I think, I'm so excited that we're gonna set a date. I think that we, we should set a date for well after we're through approving all of our budget stuff, so that we know what we're working with. Um, you know, so that's not, so we have a better idea of what we're working with. And I also think something that we talked about the last lengthy conversation about how to get to this next stage of a, a list of deliverables, is we need someone to help guide this discussion, who is trained in taking so many different ideas and helping us distill it, like, we need a, we need a strategic consultant.
And that's, the, the request for proposals will be to find this strategic consultant.
Oh, well, I'm talking about even, I mean, because this is, this is gonna be a massive amount of input and feedback from all these different entities. I'm afraid we're just gonna end up with something fairly similar to the meeting we had over Zoom months ago that I think left was just like a very big list of things and a lot of misunderstanding around well, what's next, like, who, how do we tackle this, how do we prioritize this? And I, I, I want to know if there's a way that we can afford now in this meeting to have somebody who is an expert in facilitating this kind of discussion, to help us create that priority list so that then we have a better direction for like, okay, which things require a request for proposal and which things are just like, hey, our staff and I, this ISD need to start working together now, that doesn't require bidding. It's just, this is the task that you guys are gonna work on. I, I, I just feel like we need some help with prioritization and facilitating that map, because again, that's just a lot of input. If we get all the people we want at the table, it's a lot.
Yeah, and that's not, that, that's not a hard thing to do, Casey. Uh, again, city manager has within his purview the ability to, uh, contract with someone, it's, it's just a day. That person would be facilitating for just a day, maybe four hours tops. So that's, that's doable, we can just work with Chase to get somebody here who's skilled in that uh, and let them lead us through, through that discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I mean, because like, I, I mean, I, I'll confess, I'm like embedded in this world right now, working on a different federal grant in my private life, like, and we just paid a strategic consultant for ten hours of work, three thousand dollars. I met with her twice for an hour to just kind of lead up to a big meeting we're about to have. And I just have, I kept thinking about all of this and what we're about to do and how it's so much bigger than what I'm working on and how we could really use some guidance and making a list that's actually doable and uh, anyway, I'll stop talking about that.
Great, great idea. Uh, when we select the date, Chase, can you make sure we have uh, somebody here to help us facilitate?
Yes, sir.
Um, you, we can use companies like Olson and Olson actually has some folks that might help us facilitate. So that's, that's an easy one.
Go ahead, Kim, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm looking at the number of meetings that, that we're having, because if you just need a bid to create a Safe City Initiative. I don't understand why we just can't do that, be, why we can't determine. I mean, I'm an educator, you have a lot of people here to determine what we need instead of doing all of that and then some.
Good, good question.
That's all I'm saying, I mean, that would save you some time. It just, you know, we're, we're kind of duplicating the process, that's all.
Good question.
When all you need, uh, your, your, your request for proposals is to find what is, what is a safe city? What does that encompass, that's their job to do exactly that. It sounds like we're doing their job, and then we're doing a request for proposals, so let's see. And I know that, 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 because when you're doing a Safe City Initiative, when we did one in Austin, you're asking for specifics, right? And how to implement that, so they come up with that plan, but you give them the general iCloud of what you want, and that comes from your city government. But then the, the, the bid, the person that does the plan, because that's, that's all it is, a plan, right? Yeah, so they, they show you how.
And when I, and, and the reason, to be honest with you, the reason is, we get in the middle of these um, these discussions, and it, it seems like it can turn into a perpetual table. We're not ready yet, we're not ready yet, we're not ready yet, we're not ready yet. Yeah, so, so, so with, so I'm trying to learn to, to head that off at the pass. Because if we do it that way, and if next meeting we say that we're gonna, we're gonna basically put our request for proposals, I don't think that all of us are gonna be ready to do that. I think that there's gonna be some sort of discussion that will happen soon, that will be followed by, we're not ready yet. We need to go back, like, like the file ordinance.
Right.
You know, we, we still are.
And the long and short of it is, I mean, this process is gonna be a long cycle of meetings, because even, even if we skipped this, like, this potential workshop date where we invited UTMB Center for Prevention of Violence, all of the ISDs, LMPD, Family Service Center, Fire Department, and all these other entities to kind of all you know, what we're gonna do, hopefully with the help of someone in. I mean, it is essentially a little bit of a redo of the meeting we had several months ago. However, even if we just hi, even if we just said, okay, let's put out a bid for someone to pitch us a Safe City Initiative, they're gonna want to meet with us to know what that means to us. I, no one's gonna say, great, I'll research your city and I'm gonna come up with the ten top things you should do to fix your city, they're gonna want to hear from us. So we're gonna have to have that convening either way, at, at least that's how I see it. Because I mean, I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want them to not speak with us and hear from our community players and allow people to come and listen. I wouldn't want them to just come up with a list based on crime statistics and their research. I want them to, I, you know, if you know, I'm skeptical about what that looks like anyway, coming up, like hiring somebody to come up with a plan for us. I think that I'm not, I'm not against it, but I do think there might be a way for, if we are strategic about who we involve in this conversation and the very succinct list of things we can actually measure.
Right.
Then we can start to bite it off ourselves, piece by piece, by identifying what are the things that we can outsource, or what are the things that like, what objective? Uh, a comprehensive street lighting program, okay, who's gonna tackle those kinds of things, figuring out grant resources that are available to us, master assessment of our streets, you know, that kind of thing, which is a huge project. But if that was one thing identified and we gave ourselves, oh, sorry, a number of years to do it, that's a measurable deliverable. Other than reduce crime, you know, those kinds of things.
Then is this makes that keep going on, that's all I'm saying. There are some things that are already in place, there are other cities that have Safe City Initiative. But what it sounds like, what you're wanting to do is create, to make it branded just for the city of Lamarck, and perhaps put more stuff into it, but it, this is not a new idea, that's all I'm.
No, 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 not, no, not a new idea.
It's not a new idea, that's all, just to save some time, but if that's what we want to do, that's.
Yeah, no, no, it's not a new idea, and, and I'm with you, I'm, I'm with you. I, I, I just, every council has, has their own personality. This council is extremely inquisitive. And so and so in that, we have to allow for time for discussion. Now, what makes it different, uh, Miss Nancy, and, and you're right. I think that.
Because a lot of what we're talking about, there's one company in town that has already done it.
I, I, I get it, I get it, I get it, and I get it, and. I, I, I get it. I get it. I get it. And, and I have, uh, let, let me say it like this. So safe city means different things to different people. Some people, when you say safe city, they're thinking about even our municipal facilities being safe. That's a whole nother category. Street lighting, sewage, sanitary systems. So, so we have to figure out as a council what that means to us. Now, we know the easy shiny object is the reduction of crime, and that would be the first thing, right? But, but does it go beyond that? Right? We don't, we don't know yet. I think we have an idea individually, but we have to work through discussion at arriving at what that looks like. But you're right, Kim. There, there are several companies that do this. There are several governmental entities that has, that have had this done before. I get it. I get it. I just fear that if, if we don't allow for, this is a big thing for this council. We, we are going to be judged on the, what, this is one of the things we'll be judged on. You know, we, we had the opportunity to make our city safer. It's what the community wants. How we go, how are we going about that business? And so I.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. I know it can come to come in, but, but mayor, with all due respect, there are reports that have been done by UTMB already. There are reports that have been done by the school system already. So it's not, they're out there. Yeah, I mean, there, there are things that's been done for mental health already. So that there are some things that we don't have to reinvent. That's all, that's all I'm saying. That can save us some time. I'm all about saving time and money.
You are so right, Kim. And that's like, that's why I was so adamant about wanting UTMB Center for Prevention of Violence at our last meeting, because it was like, they have the data. They've already got these programs that, that five Rs program embedded in the school system that they're piloting in Galveston ISD and other places, like, how do we get to be a part of that? And where we left that last conversation with them and 409 was like, okay, in a few months, we'll come back all together at the table because we can't have the next steps of this conversation without engaging the ISDs. And so for me, that's what all this has been about. For me specifically, like, and I think it's incumbent upon each of us if we're, in, because we don't wanna just keep having meetings, talking about meetings, talking about the things we gotta do, talking about it next time. We have to come with really defined ideas to Mayor's point about what we want to see. Because we can't all put ten things on this list and expect that we're gonna ever see them all happen. We have to identify very, like, I think it's our homework that we have to come to this meeting with, like, here's my idea for something I wanna see based on my constituency or whatever, and allow the people we invite to this meeting to weigh in on that. And hopefully, by the end of that, we finally have this, like, this is what we're going for list. And then, well, then, then we take.
Ms. Yancy, let, 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 let's hear you a little more. Is your?
Oh, no, I'm good. Because it sounds like what you wanna happen is you want it to organically happen in front of the people. That's fine. If that's, if that's the goal, that's fine. I, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm trying to save time and money.
Sure, I respect that.
But, but if you want it to happen to evolve in front of, in front of the people, then, then so be it. That's it.
I, I get that. I get that. No, we're trying to, we're trying to make sure we do it deliberately. And, and again, more than even the people, because the the consulting agency will can grab the people. I, I think even more important than that, this council needs to be sure. And I don't want to have a consultant or a list of consultants here waiting for us to act. And we on this council are still having questions about what we're directing them to do. And, and so I'm trying to navigate and learn how much time to give council to deliberate so that all of us can feel good about moving forward. And each council's different. The last council we had, we were veterans, you know? Casey was the baby. Now Casey's the senior one. So we, we had our, we understood, stood each other a little better. This council, we gotta learn each other. So I'm, I'm slowing it down just a little bit so that we can make sure that we all understand. But excellent point, Kim, and you're exactly right. It's, we're not reinventing the wheel. That's for sure.
And we should contract with people who are professionals and experts in these things and utilize their services. Like, we shouldn't try to build our own teams to do certain things if we can use people in the community to do it. Like, one hundred percent, I'm totally in agreement with that.
So the, the other part, point that you were making, Casey, was that we wanna stretch this, push this out past the work of the budget.
It just seemed prudent to me also because of the, at least the list of people I've had in my head that we're inviting to this, particularly ISDs. If we wanna make sure they come, I think we need to give them a good, long lead time. At least a month, I think, is, is wise. But that's.
No, you, you're fine. You're fine.
That's really it, yeah.
What about, uh, what do you call them, Kim? They're, they're not police chiefs. What about law enforcement in those schools?
ISDs.
ISDs and the sheriff's department. Do we bring, do we bring those, those persons as well, when we bring the ISDs?
I mean, I think so. I think, yeah. I mean, if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it.
Okay. So.
It goes beyond, like the mayor said, just crime. I mean, you gotta think about your infrastructure. That's gonna provide a safe city, your communication, your food supply, your water supply. I mean, there's a lot more than just.
Yeah.
So I think that needs to all, we've gotta come up with like these ten pillars, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, just so that I'm, so that I'm, I'm clear on the record, I'd like to invite all of our ISDs and whoever there is in charge of their security, their police on their campuses. I know a lot of them don't have their, like, counseling services anymore, but the ones that do, I definitely would wanna have them there. I'd like representation from our PD and our fire department, UTMB Center for Prevention of Violence. I'd like to invite Family Service Center and the 409 Collective.
I mean, you look at Texas New Mexico Power, look at Center Point, look at, I mean, like I said, it's, this is, the safe city is more comprehensive than crime. I mean, you got.
Absolutely. No, you're right. I think that's, those are good additions.
I learned this after September eleventh. I mean, our military bases, your, your power supply is suddenly got guards on them. Your, your communications suddenly changed. So you gotta look at that stuff. And I think as a safe city, we need to look at that, too. It's not, we gotta look beyond the immediate things, because all these can bring a city down.
Right.
So we gotta invite all these players to the table, too.
And securing our facilities is something that's been increasingly on my mind with the way that things are happening in our world and also providing safety for our staff members. You know, we have men and women, you know, in, in ditches or repairing streets every day. You know, men and women taking water payments every day. And, and the world has gotten to a place that we can't necessarily take those things for granted anymore. And so we need to make sure that we're looking at safe city from every aspect and from every angle. So it's, it's more comprehensive than, than, uh, we probably thought it was when we, we just wanted people to stop hurting each other is what, is what we started with, but, but it goes a whole lot deeper than that. So when we get to that council, I don't wanna stop the flow because I think we're gonna get out of here early tonight. But when we get to that, we know Casey wants, uh, Casey, think about those dates, uh, so that when we get there, you can kind of help us with that. Yeah. Any other questions about F? Adam G., discussion relating to approving the RFQ for a consulting firm to search for the city manager position or to provide staff with further direction. We, uh, put out RFQs, is that right, Suzie? For the city manager's search team, our search company, consulting firm. Uh, and I believe we got, on the last day, we got four back. And it was the last day. So the question for us, council, knowing how we go about our business, or trying to learn how we go about our business, is that enough time for us to review those four? Would we like to open it again, review the four? What, what's your pleasure?
I, I feel comfortable making a choice based on what was submitted.
I'd just go with those four.
You wanna work with four? You wanna work with four? Kim, what are you thinking? Which, which side? You wanna work with four? Okay. Joe, what are you thinking?
I'm ready to go with one of these four.
You ready to work with four? Okay.
What, when you say work with the four, that's.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna consider the four and not, and, and, and not open it back up. When I say work with the four, consider the four. All right.
Are we discussing them now or are we discussing them?
That's what I was looking at the, uh, looking at the, uh, agenda, discussion, possible action, so we can discuss them now.
Well, based on looking them over, over the weekend, you know, definitely got a range of sizes of consulting firms, which I like. You know, I think they all were relatively the same cost. There was not a great discrepancy in the cost at all. Averages are out between twenty and twenty-five thousand, which I think is totally doable. My first choice is Baker Tilly. Simply based on scope, experience, the, the package is comprehensive, very comprehensive. It answered a lot of questions for me and it made me have the most assurance that there would be a dedication to looking at our specific needs here and being an, an inclusive and widespread search. So.
Baker, Baker Tilly?
Yeah.
Who else would like to add to this discussion?
I'll, I'll second.
You like Baker Tilly?
For all the reasons that she said, but beyond that, I like the triple guarantee. And the triple guarantee, uh, you don't usually see in the searches, a guarantee from these search groups. But we, they, uh, commit to remain with each recruitment until you've identified a finalist and made an appointment. In the event that you're unable to reach an employment agreement, then they will continue to identify and present a second supplemental group of qualified until you find a finalist. That's no additional cost. Second, we guarantee your executive recruitment for twelve months against separation, voluntary or involuntary, which means that if you end the employment relationship with or without costs or the finalist resigns for any reason, we will repeat the executive search at no additional professional fees. But we'll include project-related expenses. And however, if we select someone within our own organization, that is not qualified for that. And they will not directly solicit any candidate selected under this agreement for any other position. That and they seem to have, uh, represent even from the lists on some of the other cities who previously were listed by some of the other companies. Baker Tilly, if you look at the most recent engagements, you'll see some cities listed. You know, one Missouri city where they were used by another company in the past. But then Baker Tilly was used more recently, so. I'm, I'm with Baker Tilly.
You, Baker Tilly? Mr. Carlson. What are you thinking?
I'm thinking either Gov HR or Gov Tilly, or, sorry. Baker Tilly. Gov HR because I've dealt with them in the past. I've done, I've used their resources. They're pretty reputable, um, as far as government hiring. But the Baker Tilly, I like the, I like the idea of the guarantee.
Yeah.
So that's, that persuades me more towards that side. However, Gov HR is a good one, too. That's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you for your two cents. It's more valuable to us than just two cents. Ms. Yancy, what do you think?
You know, because I'm a staff and agency, I like the smaller staff agencies because they are done always with opportunity. But this you can't lose, we beg to tell you, because of this guarantees you put in there. And because it seems as if that, that's typically who they work with, that their network is a lot larger than the others. But, uh, and their, and their price isn't bad.
Okay.
I don't have a time to make a tell them, but I do like, oh. And because you always wanna make sure that we're even close. Because that's something that can come back and bite.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Because we can't decide until we get to the next agenda. This part is just about discussion and questions. Are there any other questions about the, uh, search for?
None for me.
None for me.
Okay. Well, I think that we are now at a, a place of executive session. And I think we can forego the executive session on the workshop. And if we need to pick it back up on the regular meeting, we can. Okay, I think that'll be probably the better move to do that. Let's see, if we do that, then we're down to adjournment. And so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn our workshop so that we can, before eight o'clock, yay, get into our regular scheduled meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
The second. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand to adjourn for our workshop, and now we are moving into our regular scheduled meeting. Those who hereby given the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas, will conduct a regular meeting on Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one. Begins immediately after workshop, uh, the, begins immediately after the workshop that begins at six P M. Council chambers, eleven oh nine B Bay Row, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via teleconference hosted through Zoom for the purpose of considering the following agenda. We're calling this meeting to order. Robin, I'm so sorry, one more time, please, roll call.
Present.
Present.
Okay, present. Let's move through this expeditiously. Uh, we have, uh, we ask the Lord's blessing on us. Certainly, we just, we just, uh, recited the pledge. So now we're at item four, presentations and reports for a finance department has a recognition. All right, Ms. Suzie. You just received an award, yes? Would you like to come and tell us about it? Congratulations. You wanna tell us about it? We'll, we'll definitely officially recognize you at next meeting.
That we all worked so hard on last year. Last one, twenty years. This was the board from the National GFOA Government Financial Association. I know set criteria. The book really should make the criteria of being a good communication device. A good guy for, for staff, of all. Good policy, blocking. So a good financial, financial thing. So it still does compare here that they strike more. We did get a lot of house things this time than we could have. So I think this is good. The civic areas we got outstanding, we got graphic. The part, the communication, how to defend it for non-financial citizens to be able to pick up the book and be able to understand it in lay-in form. So that was the two objectives that I always wanted to be able to share what we do on the government side.
So that I don't think outstanding, I do feel very happy about now. Financial, that's great, but it only serves us. So I'm more interested in things that that we can share the glory and the hardship from this group to the citizens and share the joy. So hopefully, this coming budget book, because we all worked so hard on, hopefully, we will get more outstanding points than the current one being awarded. So we will continue to work hard. No matter what, whatever book that we come out after all the sessions, the five full days of budget workshops, I think this book will be very, very special for all of us because, one, we did listen to the voices from the community. We responded to what the needs are. We put government in action, meaning the planning. And then I did hear somebody from the community asking, well, how do we make it work? From point A to point B, you can plan all day long, but if you don't have a good, realistic way to demonstrate to the public that this is how it's going to work, meaning the financial piece, it doesn't mean anything. So we spent five full days just doing that to connect point A to point B. We had some obstacles from FB2. We tried to overcome those obstacles the best we can and arrived at this point. So whether we get the award from GFOA or not for the next budget year, I feel we already got the award deep down inside. Okay, simply because of the fact that that's a true representation of everybody pitching in and have this book representing not just our team, staff, but council support, guidance from inner city manager and directors, finance to put A and B together, connecting the dots and coming from the community, exactly what they need and be responsive and put government in action. So that alone meets our objective. Whether GFOA gives it to us or not, I think we already won the award. So with that said, last year it was great. So, but we still need to continue, work harder. And thank you to Mr. Campion too with his input regarding statistics. In addition to connecting the dots, making things work and deliver what's being asked of us, we also want to share with the community that we're going to measure the progress. Some of the projects may not complete within one year, most likely not, but we'll show you the status, how far along, how close we are to the destination. Those statistics will come in the next budget book as well. And that is the new requirement to win the award next time. So things are getting more more and more challenging along the way, but it's well worth it. So from the finance side, we're not done just today, you know, being the last day of budget workshop. There's still a long way from being done, so we do have a lot of work to do, but hopefully we will win the award from GFOA in our heart and from GFOA next year. But so far, so good. I think we work hard.
Suzie, can I ask, in addition to lauding you obviously for the work of last year, but you said specifically, we got outstanding marks for graphics and the like communication, the copy, the language. Is there anyone we can specifically thank for that right now and bring attention to, like anyone on the teams who?
Actually, all of us together, the finance team and everybody together. The picture, thank Lamarck for that. That picture was the Highland Bayou Park. It was almost like something you see from Christmas cards, but that is us.
Yeah.
That picture. So I guess the true, the true thanking, thank you should be Lamarck giving us such a nice scenery. A very calm and peaceful picture is just something like from you see from Christmas cards.
Okay, well then, thanks to Lamarck then.
Thanks to Lamarck.
Thanks to all staff.
Yes.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Suzie. And we will definitely recognize your staff officially on next meeting, Ms. Robin. Can we make sure we get Suzie on next agenda for certificate appreciation?
Thank you.
That's 15 minutes detention for you in chase. I saw it. Thank you, Suzie. 4B, Status of Master Park Plan, LNV Incorporated. Mr. Craig.
Getting these. The single staple there and an intern put those together. You were the gentleman that did the hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Get her a little presentation that I did, powerful presentation.
And would you say your name again?
My name is Craig Forsyth. I'm the Director of Architecture for Ardua. We were previously LNV. We were bought out about two years ago. So we're going through that process. Neat group of guys.
Are they loading your presentation?
They are.
Okay, cool, cool, cool bands.
Doing that just by way of background. You were contracted by the city through the city manager, the city manager?
Yes.
To to specifically do what?
Well, master planning of your parks. So it's basically just to come up with some ideas on how you may develop each of these. What I will tell you is this is very preliminary, and this is really based off of the meetings that we had with the public a couple of months ago. We were aware that you went through, yeah, the previous city manager and I quite honestly just stopped work for about a month, but I said, it's time to get this thing going again. We really want to serve, serve you, the community.
You stopped work for a month? Did you just say you stopped work for a month?
We stopped work for about four weeks. Yes, sir.
What was happening during that time?
Well, we were used to reporting directly to, to your previous city manager. And at that time, I didn't know who we were going to receive any additional comments from. All right. Now, this first, the first park that you got in front of you there, Bayou City Park, and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on each one of these. I know it's been a long day for each of you. The comments that you see and read there came from folks that actually visited each of these parks and gave us some ideas. And I will tell you, you need to be real proud of your residents. I live in a small town just north of Corpus Christi. And if we would have done something like this, I doubt we would have had near the turnout. You've got some people that really care about your city and about their parks. So we took everything that they had to say to heart. Very caring folks and had some really good ideas. Some of the items that they brought to our attention, and again, this is one of your smaller parks, memorial benches, some additional shade canopies and some new fencing. There's not a whole lot that they wanted here. One thing that did come up though, I will say is they thought this might be a good meditation park. You've got several roads and some other things. Maybe we could plant some additional trees. There's a lot of new ideas.
This one, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Your comments that you're noting from the hearing, are they part of a separate attachment to this? Or you're just reporting them orally?
I'm just reporting orally. Yes, yes.
So you want the Bayou City Park?
Second one is Matt McGaffrey Park, and we were, we were very pleased. We actually had Mac with us. Very, very interesting gentleman and he walked me through a lot of this. I caught a lot of history. Some of the items that came up there, additional parking, I know that the area to the north on the plan there, he filled me in on barbecues and how big that has grown. We also, of course, have the ball field on that north side. Talked about bringing in some additional parking there. There was also mention of maybe a dog park because of the size of this, this particular facility. Maybe a performance stage. I know there's various activities that take place at this park throughout the year. So it was brought to our attention, maybe a performance platform of some sort. And then again, because of the size, maybe your walking trails. So we're showing those various areas. Next park, this is an interesting park. We actually met with the lady that lives adjacent to it, JC Park. One of her big concerns was security. Apparently that gate there needs to be rebuilt. So new security fencing, security lighting. We were told that there's a lot of soccer that's taking place in those backfield areas. They mentioned new aluminum bleachers and then some of that play equipment that's adjacent to her property. It's just a lot of that is old. So we're asked, we could place some of that.
Where's this park?
Excuse me, sir?
Where is this park? JC Park.
JC Park was back. Not sure if I could describe exactly where it's located. It's in. I'm sorry.
It's on Magnolia.
Back in one of your neighborhoods. Next park is the Dana Park. Now, we were told, doing this, that this actually is owned by the church and rented back to the city. So we took a lot of that into consideration as we were kind of putting some of this together, but one of the concerns came from a couple of people that joined us. Parking, there is no real place to park except along the street. We took that into account here. Some meditation areas, walking trails. It is a very large park, maybe some fitness equipment and remove some of the existing play equipment and replace with new. We got that comment quite a bit. Some other things, and again, I kind of throw this out there, was lighting. Lighting was another biggie at almost all of these parks.
If, FYI.
Yes, sir.
Because a part of the arches is to normally, if you're going to make any of these changes to the, this property, you're going to have to get permission from.
From them. Any of that is done? Next one, Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park. This one, we actually had two young ladies show up and then an older lady and she was very full of ideas and the, one of the young lady's daughter actually was giving us some ideas. Very interesting. Meditation areas, parking again is a big issue. Apparently, this particular park gets a lot of basketball play. There is enough room to enlarge it. So we're suggesting that that may, that may come to pass. Fitness equipment, walking trail. This is not a large park, but you could potentially, we're showing a walking trail there. And of course, new playground equipment and again, security lighting was a big ask for item.
I'm just confused. You said it's not a large park, but if I'm mistaken, that says 25 mile walking trail.
Point 25.
I think.
Oh, is he there?
Point 25. Well, and that's a good point. I'm glad you kind of brought that up. We did, as we were measuring these out, people want to know how far they're walking. So that would be something if this ever comes to pass, we lay those out and actually have markings on those trails of the distance. So people have a good idea of how much ground they're covering. All right, next park, Mahan Park. Again, parking, parking for the football field. This is your large park with a lot of various activities and ball fields. We're proposing putting a large parking area in that bank of trees there. That may take some doing, but you could get several parking areas that could possibly accommodate that new football field that you've got. Walking and bike trails, a dog park, maybe new concession stand, shade structures near the water. We actually ran into some farmers. Matt took me down there to show me the boat ramp. So I got to meet a couple fishermen and they said shade structures would be very appreciated down in that area. Of course, upgrade the ball fields and security body.
So when you said there are parking, are those big trees? How big are those trees? Are you intending to remove them?
No.
No, I would say.
So we would not, there's a, and again, we're going off just the, we walked the area, but we're going off primarily what Google Maps was showing us. There's a large enough area there that you could get, I forget what the overall count was, but a significant number, it would certainly help with the amount of people that you'd have attended these football games. I believe this is getting confused here. Walter Fagel, this is Walter Fagel Park. The biggie there was new security lining, additional power connections and outlets. We were told that this is where you do a lot of your Christmas lighting and presentations. So a big need for some additional power there. Some memorial benches was another suggestion and some additional shades. West Lawn Park, this particular park, we had an enormous group of folks show up. Now I say enormous, there was probably 12. All had some very good ideas. One of the concerns that they brought up that we would have probably not even noticed is there's a lot of foliage along that residential fence. And they said that there's some ugly activities that went on and that they find all kinds of paraphernalia. So, yeah, it would probably be a good idea to either trim that back or completely remove it. Some other items that were mentioned, they said that a lot of people really like coming and having birthday parties in that area, new covered picnic tables. Again, a need for parking, some additional security lighting, walking trails. This is a fairly large park. There was a lot of comments about replacing the existing play equipment. And then because there are a significant number of young children playing in that area now, even some signs along that that road stating that children are at play. They really want to slow down. They even brought up the issue of potentially adding speed bumps along that road. But all items to be thought about. Again, I wanted to state, these are all very preliminary, just taking off some of the comments that we received from the public and kind of our interpretation of how some of these can be implemented in these various parks. A lot of different things can happen. This last park that we've got, salt grass. There is nothing out there. There is nothing out there currently. And that is something that, uh, we were told. That community has been told that the city was just paying, uh, building a park for them. So they want a lot of stuff. So we're proposing as much as we think could possibly fit in there. We've got, uh, pavilion, um, small little walking trail, half court basketball, uh, some new play equipment. Small dog park and some shade structures and again, memorial benches.
I would like to see added to that plan, a pocket park off of Lake Road. We do not have a pocket park and I don't know why it was overlooked. But if you could, you could add that somewhere off of Lake Road. There is some land that the city of Lamarck owns off of, uh, Bellevue in Kansas. And it would be nice to put a park, a pocket park. It would be nice to put a park, a pocket park there between Bellevue and Kansas. District A does not have a park on that side of District A. Off of Lake Road. So if you could add that to the plan.
Some of these last slides are just some ideas. This, this shows, uh, just various fitness equipment and there's a ton of stuff out there. There really is. We could, uh, show catalogs, uh, of a lot of this type of stuff. Dog parks, some of the items here, how those are typically separated, small dog, large dog, and then a, a typical entry area. Park accessories, a lot of times a lot of things that are, that are not thought about in, in a large degree are just trash cans. We, we've got to put trash cans in areas where your folks can pick up the trash. You don't want them clear on the other side of the park and, and it's those type of small little things that need to be addressed. Playground equipment. Boy, in this age that we're living in, it has gotten crazy, the type of equipment that's out there. It's, uh, it's impressive. It is costly and there's a lot of different, uh, different things that can be, uh, added to these parks. A lot of that's going to have to be, um, just discussed. We even, uh, as we were meeting with some of the residents, a lot of these. I, I don't want to just say mothers. It wasn't all mothers. There were some dads involved there too, but they said that they weren't opposed to drive it. To get to there. So if we had themed parks per se, where you had maybe one that focused on preschool age kids. Uh, some on little overage kids, some even just for adults. That, uh, a lot of these people said that they would have no issue at all driving to these areas. So something else to consider. We've got a lot of options. One of our, uh, key points in what we want to do next, of course, is meet with your, uh, parks board. With Mac and his crew. I know that they want to be very involved with this, of course. And, uh, and we want to just kind of fine tune all this, get to a point where, uh, when we meet again with you city council, that we can give you some costs associated with each of these. That'll then lead you to maybe make some better decisions on which equipment you want, how you want to do these various things or how it needs to be phased. I believe that's all.
Craig, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just. Yes, I don't know if you're, I don't know if I mentioned it to you or not, but speaking of green space. I, I was informed that the site of the old Highlands Elementary is posted for sale by the school district. And.
Highlands or inner city?
Uh, no, but the Highlands.
Also Magnolia.
Off of Magnolia over here. And, uh, and Lake Road, right?
Did that just go up?
Yeah, I was, I was told that it's posted there. It's the.
I haven't seen.
The, the deed information. It doesn't specifically say Highland Elementary.
I know at one point they had some properties for sale, but they've taken some back because they're, they're doing some long term. They're doing some long-term strategic planning on some of their property. So some of the properties that they had listed for sale, they're no longer for sale.
Oh, and my, my inquiry there is just, is there interest on the part of council to at least getting some more information directed to city manager for more information as to possibly. You know, something at the school district on that.
I, I think to nip that in the bud really quickly, uh, Chase, if you could work with the school district to get a list of all properties that they have for sale, uh, in particular within the city of Lamarck and provide that to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, hello. So I feel like we owe it to you to understand. So I think, I, I think I can speak on behalf of council in saying that maybe for the past several months, but certainly in the past few weeks, I think we've had this sort of collective reckoning with how disconnected we feel from this particular process. And I think that that is nothing to do with our Dura and I think everything to do with a lot of the transition that we've had in recent, this recent season. And just a number of other things that have delayed this process. COVID, lots of things that like, it feels like. And we definitely heard this from the parks board and we've all definitely heard this from constituents that like, feels like it's been a long drawn out process of getting the let out. And then for me personally, once you guys started doing the, you know, solicitation of feedback from the public. I wasn't really aware of a lot of what was happening. I don't feel like I got a lot of notification around it. Certainly it wasn't on my radar. So I feel like I really missed out. And I know that a lot of people in my district feel that way too. And again, that's not to point any fingers. I just, I, I feel like I, I want you to understand that and that that's going to inform some of the questions I have right now. Which is number one, this is exciting. It's exciting to see all the parks that we currently have laid out and to know that you have already begun soliciting and trying to start fitting in the basic pieces of like, okay, this is what we're hearing and knowing that it's still very early. So my first question for you is, what is the ultimate deliverable that you have been contracted to give us throughout this process?
You, you will be receiving a, a full report, um, that'll designate part by part. All of the information that we receive from the public. What we deem as, you know, there's, there's some code related items. So we'll completely write all that up for each of these parks. Um, and then you'll receive, uh, full site plans of each of these parks, more detailed of course than this. That will delineate where all of these items are going to go, plus a cost estimate.
Okay. What is the, to your best estimate timeline for that now?
Well, I'd really hate to even put a, a day of time to that. One of the things that we still have yet to do and, and, and I, I am totally with you. I think we need to be meeting more. This is my first time.
Yeah, it's weird. And especially now that we have a whole new council too.
And, and we need to get in front of the parks board. There was three members that were with us at least a good part of the, as we did the visitation of each of these parks. I thought that was great, but we really need to sit down with them and get some feedback from them. Make sure that they're on board with the direction that we're headed. And then yes, I would absolutely like to come before city council again, uh, as many times as we need to make sure that we, we've got your buy-in and that we're providing to you what you, what you want from us.
I have to tell you, that's a huge relief to hear you say that. And I think we all want, and especially recalling what Mac was saying and Bach, like, they want that too. So my next question is, so you don't have to give me a timeline. That's fine. But, so the next two questions are, can we, can we develop a few more opportunities for, not only for you to come in front of us and keep us, uh, uh, I would like to have some more regular, just keeping us abreast of what's going on, but also maybe another, another ability to solicit feedback in a bigger arena. So like you can, you can do kind of what you did for us and then leave it open for people to just submit. Hey, I want to see this here. I want to see this here, that we could market more effectively to the public. Cause I think that's one of the biggest things we're missing is, cause I think we could get even more people to come. I'm glad to hear that you felt like we had a robust turnout, but we can do even better. And then yes, whatever we need to do to make sure you have the ability and you have the ability to start talking to the parks board. Like they want to talk to you so bad. Last. In the, in your deliverable, do you have the ability to also be identifying to Kim's point? New potential sites for future parks, whether they be larger parks or pocket parks?
Absolutely.
If that is something I very much want to see.
For us and where those are, then absolutely we can, we can come up with some ideas there.
Well, what I'm asking is, is it in y'all's purview to assess our current landscape and, and maybe even see what do we currently own? Or what do we potentially maybe not own, but have partnerships with leather landowners? And you guys assess based on demographics and the things you've already heard. Yeah, we think for new pocket, these are some good potential sites for new pocket parks.
Absolutely. I have no problem doing that.
I would love that. That is definitely what I thought would be included in this is the IDing new spots. That would be great. And the last thing I'll say is if that scary clown swing does not go out of. That's, uh, that's it. That's great. So, um, in summation, another public forum, maybe here at city hall or somewhere else. Start meeting with the parks board and identifying new potential sites is definitely the kind of thing I want to see. Yeah. Thank you, Craig.
And if I may, you know, whenever we had to turn over from the previous administration, I reached out to them and told them to hold off that they need to be, we didn't know the direction that they received.
Sure.
Previously.
Sure.
So I wanted them to come before y'all, before Mac, the, the parks board. This plan is going to be the people's plan and y'all's guidance. We need your guidance. So that's why I told them to hold off. When you said you hadn't done any work, I told them to hold off. So we can come and have this discussion now.
Thanks for clarifying that.
That's very, that's very refreshing, Chase, that, that you stepped and, and you said what you did. So that, and, uh, uh, what, what actually happened? I appreciate that from you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Casey was saying. For District A, we would like a pocket park since we are paying the $2 surcharge. That the rest of the taxpayers are paying. So, uh, I guess you can get with Chase to determine, uh, where we own land. I think I've touched some already. But that is a major concern for me, uh, being the newly elected councilwoman for District A. To make sure that, um, if we're, if my, if, if our uh, citizens have to pay for $2, we want the same type of service and the equity in having a park in our neighborhood off of Lake Road. Uh, in that neighborhood, I think that's one of the few neighborhoods where there is not one and there needs to be. The other thing that I would like to, uh, to kind of interject bicycling is real, um, popular now. People like to ride their bikes as well. So you might want to, in your drawings, add a place where people can, you know, lock up their bike, their bicycles when they ride. Because, uh, I've been, you'll be proud of me, Kate. I've been doing a lot of reading about walking and riding bikes. And how that makes your city safer when people actually walk outside and ride bikes. Uh, crime actually drops when you can get people to do that. So that would be great.
You reminded me of something. Oh, sorry, Craig. Shouldn't, shouldn't have listened so close to Kim. So something I've, I've brought up a lot since I got on council was this particular dream I have of what if there was a way for Lamarck to have, uh, its parks all connect, right? Which is a huge undertaking. Like I, I get that that's huge. And I don't know if that is within the scope for you guys to add to what, what kind of costs would be associated with taking our existing parks? And where we could, and I've been talking about like, even including carbide park, which is a county park, but it's in our city limits. And what are the ways, what, what would it look like to create a type of green belt for the city of Lamarck so that we had connectivity between, maybe not all our parks. That's a pretty wide scope. But some kind of hiking biking trail. I mean, it would, uh, it's a massive cost. I know because it would require sidewalks where there's not sidewalks, cutting through easements where that might be difficult. But if this isn't the time to explore something like that, I don't know when is. What do you think about that? Do you just think that's nuts?
Certainly look at it. And one, one item I really didn't touch on, I mean, I, I showed parking. That gets pretty deep because every time we're doing one of these parks, we have to account for the, the handicaps. Folks. So we need to make sure that we're providing handicap parking as well as accessible walks. We're not talking about completely level ground in a lot of these. So, uh, that's kind of a, a pretty major undertaking in itself.
Sure.
We have to have a series of ramps and some other things. So, uh, to do what you're asking, I think could, could definitely be done. You're absolutely right. I think it would be a significant cost, but we could certainly look at that. The two that are down by the water, I think would be a perfect fit for something like that. And that's a lot of area. That's a lot of real estate. To have hike bike trails. The, the Mac McGaffey Park and then the one with the ball fields.
Mahan.
They're right there adjacent.
And I think you're right. I think that would, that seems to be in, you know, and, and again, I want to reiterate. I know that if I were to say, I want to see every single park connected in one giant hiking biking loop, that that would be millions and millions and millions of dollars. But again, if we're, if the whole conceit behind doing this plan was how do we leverage some dreams into grant funding? That can help us achieve some of these things. That's something I want to see. And I think it's something that definitely plays into a safe city. If we are creating opportunities for people to spend time outdoors, doing things that are good for their families. That, that, that makes our city's quality of life better. Then let's look into it and let's, let's attach a number to what something like that would be. And maybe it's not the entire, you know, it's not a loop across the entire city that cuts across I-45. But maybe it's too small a loop. Maybe it's the Highland Bayou Mahan area. And maybe there's a way to find a way to connect some of these ones in our older part of the city too. I, I know that those of us whose districts are over there would be very interested in that. So anyway, sorry to add one more thing to that list. I was trying to keep it smaller, but dang it.
And I just did find out that the land by Highlands Elementary is for sale. And the land on 1765 and Lake Road is also back on market by TCI. That, that will be prime property.
Yeah. So you looking at, you looking at him like he got, like he's responsible. I think he gets your point, Miss Anthony.
You're, you're not from the Houston area, as I recall. You're out from.
I'm actually in the Corpus Christi office.
Okay, Corpus Christi. I thought was thinking around San Antonio. You're familiar with the Houston Galveston Area Council?
Very little.
Okay. My, my suggestion as part of this is under the, the acronym is HGA. There is a parks regional plan. But that part of the, the area planning. And Lamarck historically has not participated and been connected with that. And there, I, my suggestion is to take a look at that. And there are money, funding opportunities for us. Especially if we're turning this into perhaps a walkable community or a bike community, some of the things that were mentioned. You're doing discussions. So that's, that's one area. The other thing is when you met with Mac, I can't envision you meeting with Mac McGaffey and him not saying, you need to come before the parks board. Were you invited by him to come before the parks board? Or, or you were not, you're kind of on the hiatus right now, right?
I don't think that was ever set up either.
It was not.
It was not discussed in terms of.
Well, I know as, as Casey said, they are anxious to.
It sounds like you're ready to go.
We are, we are likely to get one of them as soon as we can.
That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Coming then out of the cold, so to say.
Well, it's good to be in front of you. It really is. I, I know this has been a long time coming. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Craig, Craig?
Yes, sir.
Craig, a, a couple of things. When, when I think about a, a, a master parks plan. And, and perhaps you're not done. I, I don't think that you're done, but I think about a comprehensive plan, right? So I, I think, uh, to help me to understand, this was an update, right? This was something that says, hey guys, this is what we've been doing so far. This is not the plan.
No, sir.
It's just an update. Okay.
Yes.
The other thing that, that I think about, when I think about master parks plans. Part of it is feedback from the community, right? But part of it is the, the expanding of information. So that. So that communities that may not be aware of all of the innovations in, in parks, that they would then be made aware of those and be educated and informed on those. Um, and so I would like to see us do a better job of saying, and not only that, but, but a lot of communities are having splash pads. And not only that, but a lot of communities are, are doing these things with their playscapes. A lot of communities have gardens, uh, that have parks that are specifically designed to cater to seniors. Maybe their gardens. Maybe they have walking gardens and seating and things of that nature. So I would not only like to see you, gather the things that our community would like to see, but I also would like for you to make recommendations based on, on part, the park systems, uh, that are operational and, and impactful today. Uh, and I'm with, I don't know who said this, but somebody said something, maybe it was you, to the effect of each park may need to have its own theme. And so maybe a smaller park like, uh, and I'm just throwing this out there, like Bayou Park might be the park, uh, with a garden. And the walk, uh, for the seniors, maybe a bigger park, uh, like, uh, 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 West Lawn, uh, Park may have a splash pad in it, right? Uh, so I'd like to see some of those recommendations along as well. Because one of the things that, that the previous council to this one felt strongly about was at the end of this, we are going to have splash pads. Plural. May, may only be two, but we said, right, Casey, that we wanted to have a, a couple of places for our kids to go and play in the summertime in the water. Uh, and, you know, and receive some, some, uh, refreshment. So if you can add those things to the, to the equation, I would really appreciate it.
You know, Mayor, there's one thing that every city has that we don't have, the Veterans Park.
A Veterans Park? There you go.
Veterans slash Memorial Park. And that way you can incorporate the flowers.
Flowers.
The meditation, the meditation benches and have it, I mean, you.
That's one thing.
That's one thing we don't have in the city.
And the one, the one area that we can improve on in our city, throughout our city, is the amenities that we have for our seniors. Parks and, and programming, right? And, and you have nothing to do with our program. Uh, but, but you do have something to do with our parks. So I would suggest that that would be a major theme in at least one of our parks. We need to make one of our parks cater to our senior citizen community because there's very little for our seniors to do in our city and we need to change that.
By the way, I really do urge you to go to the HGA. I'm just looking at it. We've got funding opportunities for parks and natural areas. February, now our next date would be February for up to a million dollars on our wetlands, which is Matt, the Matt McGaffey and to some extent the, uh, the, uh, what's the other one out there? Mayhem. And, uh, and then there's, uh, there's several, there's a state grant as well, too. So I urge you to take a look.
I will, certainly.
The other thing is, uh, our young people love to roller skate. That's not even true, is it? They love to skate.
Oh, God. Run away. Run away. No shade to anyone who loves roller skating, but.
Our young people like to skateboard.
I'm sure.
And so one of the things I think that we have an opportunity to do is have a skate park. So I would like to see what that would look like somewhere. There's a tennis court at Mayhem Park that is, it had been used in I don't know how long, uh, Mayhem Park is by the water as well. Maybe, maybe that turns into a skate park for our kids.
So we're gonna look into that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions for Craig? All right, Mr. Craig, thank you. Certainly we look forward to working with you. Thank you for coming by and, and, uh, giving us this update.
You bet. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Carey, you have status of vacant position.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Council, we all bear with me. It's been a long day, so I have some notes here.
We've been here with you.
Yes, sir. We, uh, you know, we, we obviously had a great opportunity to set this city up with success for decades. Having so many leadership positions to fill, I see this as a great, wonderful opportunity. You know, because we as a council, y'all, we will make these decisions together. These people will be hired. You know, good loyal customer oriented, forward thinking people, leaders. Uh, you know, this is something that we shouldn't rush. We have to get these positions right the first time, obviously. You know, I know there are many people that are pushing us to hire and, and, and fill these vacancies, but it, it, it literally, we need to take our time to figure that, figure it out together. You know, we make, we take these decisions very serious. You know, we've had many discussions over the last couple of months and we obviously need assistance, but our staff wears multiple hats. We all do. And, and we need to bring in consultants as we've been discussing this entire night, consultants to come in to help. You know, a crisis communication consultant, uh, hiring a human resource, Patty and Colleen, you know, they need help. You know, uh, a consultant to the police department, uh, strategic consultant. That's something that, you know, I will be making recommendations to Mayor and Council here shortly. I, uh, and we'll report back to the community with the decisions that are being made. I just, I'm asking everybody, I get, I get emails and calls from many citizens saying, we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to hire this person, this and that. You know, don't want to rush in and jump in and make those decisions. You know, they can't be made lightly. That's what I just ask for patience and, and, and we are doing everything we can on our side to figure it out and to, to make sure this city is moving in the right direction, you know? This is an opportunity to set us up where success for decades, literally, you know, and like we said, we, we had those postings and we only had a couple of people apply, but we have, we're reaching out to different consultants all throughout this entire region. I'll make a recommendation to the council and then we'll move forward.
So you, let, let's get this straight for the record. Uh, you posted the, uh, position. The council asked you.
Yes, sir.
To, uh, look for an interim, a police chief, interim fire chief, interim developmental services director, right?
Correct.
You posted those positions and you didn't get be, because they were interim perhaps.
Correct.
You didn't get, you didn't get a good number. Okay. And so you're saying now you're going to try to go about it a different, a different way.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Exactly.
So you posted the interim police?
Yes, ma'am. Interim fire, uh, developmental services. You know, who, whoever the city manager is going forward is going to need these, whether it's me, whoever, whoever y'all select and choose. It, they're going to need these consultants and their guidance and their advice. And, and that's 100%. I mean, I know that for sure. You know, like Ms. Colleen, I mean, she's busy. I mean, Ms. Patty, you know, just to, just to put that on Ms. Patty to try to open these up and do these. I mean, that's just, it's, it's too much, you know? We can bring professionals in to help us, guide us, make these decisions is that's the most, that's the best way to go.
So is it safe to say that you're asking us for time and saying that what you'd really like to do is instead of filling these, instead of making a recommendation to us tonight for who you want to fill these positions permanently, you're asking, you're telling us, you think the best course of action is to hire in a few very specific consultants that will help with recruitment and filling some of these positions? And you, the next course of action is you're going to bring to us suggestions for who those consultants are? And then the process would begin to fill those, those permanent staff.
Correct.
Okay.
And that, and that, you know, more than likely though, the next city manager will be making those decisions. We have interim, you know, uh, Chief Merriman, Chief Wagner. We're, we can hold things down and move this in forward in services until we can reach that time. We just don't want to rush, rush this process.
Well, that's, um, that sounds reasonable to me. I mean, it's been a month, right? I mean, that, that's a very short amount of time for me to make those kinds of big decisions. And I respect you recognizing that the staff we have on hand might not be, and might not have the bandwidth nor the expertise to make some of those decisions. Yourself included, you know, I think that's reasonable.
Right.
Question I got is with, uh, consulting agencies that we have now, do we have to put out another RFQ for those other positions to get consulting attorneys or consulting agencies again?
Well, I, I think that anytime you change this, the scope of work.
Okay.
You're going to have to put out, right?
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
If we have to do that, we'll do that.
And, and, and so a, a couple of things. Number, number one, when, when we, uh, as a council, when we said to, uh, the interim city manager, we want you to, uh, hi, recruit and hire an interim anything. You know what that did? Any, any person that would have been interested would, I would suggest that they probably said, your interim will be interim. And we're going into a situation where everybody's interim and we have this new council. And so these are folks that have families and careers and things of that nature. So that can be rather intimidating, right?
Yeah, agree.
So that's, that's the, the, the one thing. The second thing is, is, um, we have an opportunity, again, like Jay said, to change the, the face of our, our city. Uh, and to bring people in, in these positions, uh, that can, can actually make huge impacts in the way that we deliver services for our community. Uh, and, and, and I believe, uh, that Chase is moving in the right direction when he says to do this right, we probably need help. And I would suggest that we need help more than what he's suggesting primarily based on the fact that he's interim. Right? And, and it's hard to go work for anybody interim. That's, that's just a hard thing to do. So, um, I'm sure there's a whole lot of other things that, that are in that, in that, uh, recommendation that I'm not going to touch. Uh, but I will say that I see that, uh, perhaps the direction we gave you, Chase, for interim might have, uh, handcuffed you a little bit. And that's okay. We'll figure it out. Anybody else have any questions about the, uh, update?
Yeah, I do. Okay. So, so you're saying that you posted these positions? Are they having them posted?
The, the fire chief, the, uh, the police chief and, uh, developmental services.
They haven't posted.
Yes.
So they've been posted for two weeks, three weeks?
Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay.
Correct.
And, and when you say posting, you're just posting them on the website?
Correct. T and L, different places. Yes, ma'am.
So you posted them on T and L?
We reached out to different. The paper.
The paper.
Social media, the, uh, we reach out to different people throughout the community, throughout our region.
And so your proposal is to get a consultant to come in to help with permanent decisions?
Yes, ma'am.
To help recruit? I would suggest Chase, and tell me if I'm wrong, to, to help recruit these positions on a national scale?
Correct. And to help, I mean, you know, to help us come in, to help guide us through these next six months to eight months. I mean, we're, as a city, we're about to go through, you know, some, some trying times. We need to get professionals in here who can help us. We don't know what the future holds, but, you know, I can only do so much, Chad, David, we can only do so much. You know, Ms. Patty, Colleen, this Robert, we call this. I just, what's best for this city, I think, is we, we reach out.
But they're all, they're all interim.
Yes.
I, I just think, I think we're going to be challenged.
That's why I said permanent.
Permanent versus the interim. Uh, just for my.
Right. And, and that's the, that's the, that's the, when, when, when I visit with Chase, that was the thing, the, the sticking point was primarily when we, when we directed Chase to put the interim tag on those that he would bring into the city, that opened up a different can of worms for him because not everybody would say, you want us to come and work with you as interim and you're interim and you have a new council. So, I mean, anybody can, can understand that that would be, make anybody hesitant, right?
Yeah, they won't know who their boss is in six months. You know, they're stupid.
Right. Exactly. Right.
Right.
So.
But you're proposing to get a consultant though, for, to do the, to do the permanent pick, that, not interim, but to do the permanent picking for a police chief.
To start.
Yes. Changing it from seeking an interim to seeking permanent positions with the guidance.
So when the new city manager is hired, whether that be, they can pick that up with them and then help that city manager make a decision. You know, a more informed, quicker decision.
So basically it makes it objective, this process objective, whether.
Yes, ma'am. For sure.
And that'll, that'll give us a chance to say what, not, not who we want, but what our constituents want in these positions. Uh, and that will, that will alleviate some of the pressure from Chase. He can do it, no problem. I'm not suggesting that. But as the interim, he does not necessarily want to do it, right, as the interim. So if a firm does it, it is coming from a different place. They're getting our thoughts, the community's thoughts.
And it would be one thing if it was one position.
Yeah.
It's multiple.
It's multiple. Yeah.
Um, I'm going to figure that. Do we need to give official direction about removing that title of interim? Or no, that's not that big a deal. Okay.
No. There, there are, there are groups, search groups that focus on interim. If you'd have to put together another RFP, just, just like we're doing here for, right, for the city manager.
And one of the other things, as we put this piece together, that Chase is not necessarily saying to us, but he did say it to us, within the next three to six months, there's going to be a lot of challenges that, that come to our city. Right? And some of these challenges will far exceed the, I would think, the, the intended service of an interim. Interims usually spend short periods of time trying to stop, be a stopgap. But some of this stuff that's, that's going to surface as it relates to the challenges that in particular our police department will face, there isn't an interim morale, I would say, that would be able to meet that challenge. Uh, and I wouldn't want them to because, because, you know, there, those issues are going to cause tremendous amounts of work to have to be done. So.
And Mayor, I, I know 100% Chief Widen, I mean, Chief Merriman, Chief Wagner can do the job. That's not, not a question in my mind.
Absolutely.
I just know we need to help. I mean, I know Chad's going to need some help and some guidance and advice as to what, especially with that police department, to help straighten it out, to help us move it forward. I think it's time for us to bring in consultants to help us and, you know, I just didn't want us to rush these decisions. I mean, the, in the interim, I, we can all handle these jobs. We know, I know we can. I can do this job. They can do that job. I'm just thinking of more long-term, you know, setting goals for the city and looking into the future is, uh, is the way I'm thinking, my thought process.
I think that's, I think that's wise.
Yeah. I think so, too. Any other questions, guys? All right. Citizens' participation. We've had like eight of these today already. So Gus, could I just say, does anybody want to speak? Nobody's online. Anybody here want to speak? If you do, I'll read this. If you don't. Okay. All right. Let's move to the consent agenda, agenda item six. Uh, Ms. Koo, Finance Director has asked that we pull six. Ms. Koo, Finance Director has asked that we pull six G because there's a discrepancy in the date. And so we want to pull that. But item, A through, items A through F are still viable tonight. Does anyone want to pull any of those items?
No.
Discussion possible action on the following items. Under the consent agenda. I guess we'll take all these together, please don't tell me I have to read these, Gus. All right, consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I have some moved.
Second?
My second.
Any discussion? And now we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven A, Gus, I'm gonna read seven A and seven B, if you don't mind, to get us through, is that okay?
That's fine, it's okay to vote separately.
Okay, okay, public hearing, I'm gonna read these together and we'll have one public hearing. Seven A, conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopting ordinance number, letter O. Dash two zero two one dash zero zero one two, requesting a zoning district change from L one light industrial to R one single family residential. For lots one through fourteen, Kate Cook and Stewart subdivision located near First Avenue and Orange Street. Galston County property ID number one nine six one two nine and six one zero eight five one. This is the second and final reading, item seven B. Conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopters, adopting ordinance number, letter O. Dash two zero two one dash zero zero one three, requesting a zoning district change from R one. Single family residential to PDD. Olympia Lakes Plan Development District for approximately fifty one point zero one acres located near Delaney Road and Longdale Street. Galston County property ID number one three one four nine three. We will close the public, the regular meeting at.
Public hearing.
We'll close the regular meeting. Eight fifty nine and opening the public hearing at eight fifty nine. Is there any persons, persons on Zoom or in the audience wishing to speak on item seven A or seven B? Is there any person on Zoom? Or in the audience wishing to speak to item seven A or seven B? Last call, any persons wishing to speak? To item seven A or seven B? The public hearing is closed at. Eight fifty nine, we'll reopen the regular scheduled meeting at eight fifty nine. Eight A, old business discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance. Number, letter O, dash two zero two one, dash zero zero one two, requesting a zoning. District change from L one light industrial to R one single family. Residential for lots one through fourteen, Kate Cook and Stewart subdivision located near First Avenue and Orange Street. Galston County property ID number one nine six one two nine and six one oh eight five one, I'll entertain a motion. So move to the second.
My second.
Any discussion? And now we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven B, discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance number, letter O, dash two zero two one, dash zero zero one three. Requesting a zoning district change from R one single family residential to PDD Olympia Lakes. Plan Development District for approximately. Fifty one point zero one acres located near Delaney Road and Longdale Street, Galston County property ID number one three one four nine three, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven C, eight C, discussion possible action regarding approving the revised general plan application for Olympia Lakes, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
My second.
And it's got discussion. Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven eight D, I'm sorry, discussion possible action to direct staff on a file ordinance. Let's stipulate that we gave earlier in our workshop, the appropriate. Recommendations to our attorney. Now. We need to formalize that with a motion. And the motion should probably say. We make a motion to formalize the recommendations that we made during the workshop to our interim city attorney as relates to the file ordinance. I just said it, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine. Award of bids, nine A, discussion possible action regarding award of bid LM. Number zero one two 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 DXI Industries for liquid chlorine, calcium. Hypochlorite and sulfur dioxide and the amount of sixty thousand dollars, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine B, discussion possible action regarding award of LM bid number zero four dash two two. To Vulcan Construction Materials for limestone base in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is, any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine C, discussion possible action regarding award of LM bid number zero five dash two two to Evoqua. Water Technologies for Odor and Corrosion Control in the amount of eighty thousand dollars, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, let's back up.
No, just to clarify, is this? The, no, I, I see a purchase of water, I need to.
You good?
Yes, I'm fine, aye.
Okay. We'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten, new business discussion possible action regarding. Approval of the use of Mac McGaffey Island by your park for the first annual Michael Williams Back to School Supply Drive to be held on August twenty first. Twenty twenty one is forwarded by the Parks Board with favorable recommendations, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten B, discussion possible action regarding authorizing City of La Mark to issue requests for proposals. For administrative services and request for qualifications for professional services. For the American Rescue Plan Act. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let the record reflect that Suzie's gonna use boilerplate. Criteria. Okay, any other discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten C, discussion possible action regarding approval of the annual purchase of surface water from Gulf Coast Water Authority in amount of. One million five hundred fifty seven thousand four hundred fifteen thousand seventy two cent, which includes bond A. Eight thousand five hundred thirty dollars nine cent, bond B, thirty seven thousand three hundred forty five thousand fifty two cent, bond D. Two hundred forty five thousand one hundred twenty three thousand seventeen cent and surface water at one. Million two hundred sixty six thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and ninety four cent for a combined total of one million five hundred fifty seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and seventy two cents. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten D, discussion relating to approving the annual water pollution control and abatement contract with the Galveston County Health District for services provided. Including citywide grease trap inspections, wastewater treatment inspections. And compliant investigation, complaint, uh, complaint, um, excuse me, investigations in the amount of fourteen, fourteen thousand four hundred and forty two dollars, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten E, you ready Casey?
Yeah.
Discussion possible action regarding setting a date for a safe city initiative workshop and give direction to issue. For RFP posting to City Hall, what date do you have for us, Casey?
Well, I suggest we can either. Call an early special workshop on our October meeting day, which is October eleventh.
Okay.
Well, that's my first suggestion, is let's just keep it all in one day, make it an afternoon of it again. And then the other would just be. October fifth, which is a Tuesday, sometime in the eve, having an evening meeting, if we needed, if we felt like we needed to have it be an evening meeting.
So. Okay, what day is, uh, just really quickly, if we don't know, we don't know, what day is National Night Out? Is that the first Tuesday of every?
October fourth.
October, is it?
Monday.
It's a Monday is the first of October. Okay, so.
Oh, it's what? Oh, it's November, I thought it was October.
It's in October.
October fourth. October four.
Yeah. So what was the meeting day, Casey?
I was suggesting, well, and actually, I don't know if maybe our meeting day would change, but our scheduled city council date for October is October eleventh. That also happens to be Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day, I don't know if we would change. But I don't know if we normally reschedule for that.
I don't, I don't think that we ever have.
No, but anyway, that's.
Do y'all want to come in at, at one on October eleventh? So that we can all just kind of have two meetings in one day, so that we can limit that.
Are we gonna have enough time if we do that one?
Uh, that's a good question. From one to five, I think, and then, and then maybe have a break, an hour break.
I mean.
I'm also fine with any, like, we could do, like, like I said, the previous Tuesday or even the Tuesday before that. In the evening, if we wanted to just have it be a six o'clock meeting.
Wouldn't have to be during the day to invite some of the people.
That's, that's what I was thinking is, is that a, I mean, I, I think it could go either way, I think some folks would be easier for them to come in the evening, other folks in the daytime. But I think we're more likely to get some of these institutions to join us if it's a daytime meeting.
October eleventh doing that, well.
October eleventh, you like that?
And that gives enough time for system to.
Yeah, I was thinking it's ample.
Down after, after school start, yeah, okay. October eleventh, is that the date, guys? I need a motion.
So moved for October eleventh.
At one o'clock?
The workshop, at one o'clock.
The workshop, Safe City.
My second.
Yeah, second, any other discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten F, discussion possible action to approve. An RFP for consulting firm to search for the city manager position and provide staff with direction. We have four gang that submitted, we had a healthy discussion about those four. Are we ready to select a company tonight? Sounds like yes, if so, I will entertain a motion.
Move that we select Baker Tilly for our search company.
That Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly.
My second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are at appointments.
Mr. Mayor, have none of that.
Yeah, you don't have any appointments?
I do. I do.
You got an appointment, Casey? Look at you, Casey.
Coach Walker called me and I am thrilled to appoint Mr. Coach Larry Walker, to reappoint him to the Parks Board.
Now under our new rule, that's for one year.
Cause he's a, he's. Cause he doesn't.
Correct.
Yeah. So you.
To be clear, the one year.
Thank you for, yes, you're right.
Casey, I wanna.
I just got really excited that finally we connected, I'm just.
I want to applaud you for, for slowing down and for, not that you were going fast. But, but because of all of the things, you slowed down and you, you worked your way to getting in touch with him and I want to applaud you for that. That was really, really, really compassionate of you.
Well, um, it's, it's a delight.
Considerate.
Well, thank you, and thank you for helping and, uh, hooray.
Good deal, good deal, any other appointments, guys? Do we have a second to Casey's nomination of Coach Walker, nomination as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gang, we have reached executive session. Mr. Compeon suggested that we may need to receive a briefing from our city attorney. Under the executive session, under section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with our attorney. What say you? It's ten minutes after nine. Would we like to entertain a brief? A brief briefing? I believe he's gonna brief us on any, any litigation that we may be involved in. I think we can hold it to ten good minutes if we like.
Absolutely.
Gus is a bunch of sweaty eyed tired people.
Are we wanting, are we wanting the last ten more minutes or no?
Yes, I think that this is.
Let's do this, guys, let's, let's get this done so that when we leave, we're done. Executive session, City Council for the City of La Mark, Texas. Reserves the right to adjourn to executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss. Any of the matters listed below is authorized in Texas Government Code Section five five one. That zero seven one, consultation with attorney, that's the one that we're going to be retreating under five five one. That zero seven one. Five five one that zero seven two deliberations about real property, five five one that zero seven three deliberations about gifts and donations, five five one that zero seven four. Personnel matters, five five one that zero seven six deliberations about security devices and five five one. That zero eight six economic development. So we'll adjourn our regular meeting at this time and we'll move into our executive session. Pray to God that we return in ten minutes. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.
There are no actions to be taken out of the executive session. So we, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, we certainly will hear any remarks from our council at this time.
Um, I thank you a million times over to all the staff and my fellow council people for working really hard and trying your best. It's all we can do, and I definitely think we have done that. We have tried our best. I want to make a personal plea to the people of our community. The Delta variant is, the transmission is so high, our county is in such dire straits. Please wear a mask, please get vaccinated if you're able, and take care of one another. And lastly, I really enjoyed Mr. Gervey Wyndham's indication today. And you know, I say that as someone who is not religious, but I do highly respect the faith of others and how it guides your life. And I certainly love having people wish for wisdom. And so I would like to make a formal request though, that in some, I like that you've already asked for there to be more faith leaders. I'd like to make sure that we're incorporating as many different kinds of faith leaders as possible. You know, we have mosques here in our community with, I don't know all the other different faith organizations that we have present in our city limits, but I'd like us to make a specific reach out to them and make sure all non-Christian faiths are also included. So anyway, but it was great. Thank you. And day five done.
A couple of things I want to say is, staff, thank you very much for all your hard work and everything you guys do every day. You guys are the ones that keep the city going. Like the mayor said this morning, thoughts and prayers go out to the Turbiatee family. Please keep us informed as far as a funeral. And if there's anything that the family needs, let us know, please. And we will do everything we can as a city and a council to help them. And the last thing is, Susie, thank you and your team. So great job. Go enjoy your vacation. And that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Okay, to Chase and your team, great job. I know you, this has been a crazy last 35 days for you. And to Susie, thanks for your patience. I love your passion, by the way, and the heart that goes into your work. Sometimes I get that same way too about the work that we do, especially when it's dear to our heart. Because the taxpayers' money and time is very, very important. To my fellow council people, I am a pastor's wife and a teacher, so I do like time and management. So I'm the, I am that pastor's wife that give my husband a, you've been preaching 50 minutes. So sometimes you may say we do that as we, as we do the people work, but it sounds as if that this is a historic council. As the work, I've been listening to the staff and listening to the citizens that they said they've never seen this amount of work and organic building in Lamarck ever. So I think that's an amazing compliment to our new mayor as he tries to make sure that the people's involvement and voice is really, really, really heard. So just a shout out to you, Mr. Mayor, because I know the last six, seven months have not been easy for you. And I know you make it look effortless, but that's what preachers do. You make it look effortless, but I, I can imagine the time and the energy that goes into the constant phone calls. But also as Councilwoman Casey has said, today, we experienced the largest number in one day of Galveston County COVID new cases at 544. When I saw that come through on my phone, I immediately let Joe see it because I know he works for the Red Cross and I know he gets the daily numbers like I do. And I am just shocked by that number, to be quite honest with you. So let's be prayerful for our city and our nation as we're now dealing with a new virus. And, and I concur with what she says, if you're not vaccinated, pray about doing so to keep yourself safe and your family safe and just your community safe. And that's all I have, Mayor, and thank you. I'm, I'm enjoying my ride on this council.
First of all, sincere sympathy to the Turbiatee family. I will not be able to join them at the services on Friday because Kim and I have a previous engagement at a elected officials conference. And certainly there with the family, he's a resident of District B, so it's someone that we all, we all share with the family. The sorrow and the hurt that's going through the young man, Jesse Turbiatee, his situation there. I, I repeat, I wear this because I have been on a ventilator in my life. I don't want to be on a ventilator again in my life. And so just my personal choice. Each of us, as I say, I don't, I'm going to tell you what to do, but take notes, please take notes and, and recognize that especially younger people are being impacted. And what is frightening, and frightening on two respects, there's no room at the hospitals. That's frightening, I think about that. And, and I say this, my cousin happens to be the chairperson of the Texas Funeral Commission. He, and, and so I hear the reports from statewide. And business is good for the undertakers, and I hate to say that so bluntly, but he does. He says it's not something to be proud of, but business is very good for the undertakers. And God bless each of you and your families. I'm proud to be part of this council. There is nothing boring here, believe me, nothing boring. Which is what I like. I don't like boring. And so, and then certainly the citizens of Lamarck and the residents, you also are not boring at all. In your calls and your emails and our conversations online, nothing boring. And I'm most appreciative for your willingness to engage, at least gauge me as I'm, I'm learning and trying to navigate my way through, through this particular volunteer service. And thank you, Mayor, for your patience with, with all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. We, we are about 12 hours in today. We, we had a chance today to give Susie, our finance director, direction on our budget. We had a chance to select a new municipal court judge and to do the people's work all in one day. I've been around a long time, and I can assure you that there has not been a council that has been this active, this engaged, and this effective in my tenure here on this council. I'm proud of you guys for the work that we've put in. This is day five of budget workshop. We've never went past day three. This is the fifth day of budget workshop because this council cared enough to look at every aspect of the budget. Not only the numbers, but what those numbers look like in practice, the people, the positions, right? The policies even. This is a unique council, a historic council, and a council that will do tremendous work for our community. And I want to say again, thank you for everything that you all have done. We do think about Jesse. We think about him every day. We think about his family. We think about his children. We think about the men and women of the Lamarck Fire Department that have to live life in the future, knowing that one of them has transitioned to a better place. That's a painful proposition. I've never had to deal with that as a firefighter. I don't know what that's like. But I do know that there's pain involved, and certainly our hearts, hearts of my family and myself, go out to the entire Lamarck Fire Department. I know you're hurting. We're here for you as a council. And if you need anything from us, don't hesitate to call, don't hesitate to ask because we're here for you. Let me say this, and then I believe that I'll be ready to go home. I think that we have an opportunity in this city to move this city forward and to places that we never thought that we could go. But in order to do that, we have to do that together. Doing that together says that we don't tear each other down. We don't nitpick on social media. We don't find things that are divisive to exploit one another. We move forward together, and we can do it if we move forward together. That means that we have to share in the sacrifice and compromise with one another and move forward together in a way that will be what's best for our city. Not what's best for us individually, not what's best for our particular street, but what's best for our city. And that's important. And I invite us to continue to moving, to move forward together. Already we have seen some things that would suggest that perhaps not all of us want to move forward together. And there's some ugly things that we've seen. But I encourage this council, we've been here before. Let's keep doing the work, and the work will speak for itself. I am tired. Have no more energy. I don't want to talk anymore. So I'm going to ask Chase if he has anything he'd like to say, and then we'll go home.
I just want to say my thoughts and prayers are with Ms. Randy, her family, her children, you know, and with the fire department, chief merrymen. It's been a difficult time, and we're going through it, you know. We're going to continue to go through it, but we're going to make it to the other side together. So I'm just thankful that we made it through this, and I was concerned. But, uh, but Susie did a great job, and she's wonderful, so.
Absolutely. 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 Congratulations, Susie. You did another one. You got, you got through another one. We are proud of you. It was, but you led the team, and we're happy to have you lead us. Thank you. Anything else, guys?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second. All in favor? Bye.